...meeting for August 18th, 2020. It's a little past six and we're holding this through our Zoom teleconferencing. We have all of the commissioners are present, so we have a quorum, and so I'll call the meeting to order. Do we have any planning commissioner announcements? Anybody like to say anything? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. So at this point, this is the time we normally have for people to comment on items not on the agenda or items on the consent calendar. Is there anybody wishing to speak on public comment?
Yes, sir. There's first person in the line is caller with the number ending in 453. Caller, you're online. You have to hit star nine to be able to... There you go. Now you can talk.
Yes, you're speaking to me?
Yes, you are online caller.
Yes, and I'm here to speak to the agenda item concerning vacation rentals.
If you can hold on, we will open public comment for the agenda for item B1. Right now, this is for, you know, this is for the agenda items, per items that are not on the agenda.
Yes, and I'm not sure why, I'm not sure why I was asked to voice my opinion at this time, I'm sorry. I'll wait to be...
That's all right. Everybody's learning this. You probably had a raised hand or something, or were in the queue. We normally take public comment for items on the agenda after staff reports, so everybody is better informed.
I understand. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak for items not on the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair. There's nobody else with their hand raised at this point.
Okay, great. So as you can see, we have, for people looking to join the meeting, we have the contact information that was on the screen. And so if you can follow those items, or there's call-in, call-in ability too. So moving on, we'll, we move on to the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar. We got A1, A2, and A3. So we have the current events, planning, processing list. We have, oh, excuse me, approval of minutes for the planning commission meeting of June 2nd, and we have approval of meetings for the planning commission meeting of June 16th. Does anybody wish to pull any of those, any of those items?
I just have a minor comment on A2.
Okay. Let's pull A2 then.
Yeah, that's the one where I think for technical difficulties, you and Jesse couldn't lead the discussion, even though you're participating in the discussion. And so there's just nothing there saying why I'm chairing or opening and closing. So I think it's just a note somewhere there due to technical circumstances that it was given to me to chair the meeting, just so there's no sense of insurrection or lack of protocol.
Barbarians from the gates. So, okay, can we note that on there, Scott?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm having trouble, once more we got technical issues, I'm having trouble seeing all of the commissioners all at once on my screen for some reason. So if anybody wishes to talk or bring up an item, if you would just say so also, because I may not be able to see your hand raised. So anybody wishing to pull any other items off of the consent calendar? Okay. Then do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Scott, could you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Barone?
Aye.
Commissioner Agrovia?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Chair Luer?
Yes.
Item passes 5-0, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to public hearings, this is item B1. This is zoning ordinance text amendment, municipal code amendment, and the location is citywide. This is for the vacation, short-term vacation rental, Title 17. Scott, you have a staff presentation on this?
We do. We actually have our esteemed city manager here with us this evening, who is going to give the presentation on the vacation rental ordinance. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Collins.
Okay, we're honored.
Oh, good evening. I'm the one that's honored here to be a part of this and to bring forward the great work of our community committee on the short-term vacation rental ordinance. I'm delighted to bring it here. It's been long awaited, as we know, and based on the number of comments that we've received, it's still a very critical and important issue to our community members. So I'm honored to bring it forward and have set the table for a really good discussion for you as our planning commissioners, who will make formal recommendations to city council. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. I am still a newbie to Zoom, just like everybody else, so I'm going to try to share my screen without shutting down my computer. So bear with me here. Let's see if it works. All right, there it is. All right. I started off with just a white background, but I spritzed it up for me. I put some green in the back, so just going to jump right into it. Largely what we're going to cover is what's in the staff report. I won't provide as much detail, so that we have plenty of time for questions from planning commissioners, as well as plenty of time for public comment. So with that, we will provide some background on STRs, discuss the community committee, how it was formed, what its goals and process were, the areas of consensus amongst committee members, areas of disagreement, and then get to questions, public comment, deliberation. So at present, we have a cap of 250 short-term vacation rentals. Those are rentals of less than 30 days in the city of Morro Bay. That cap was set through an urgency ordinance in June of 2016. At the time, the community was rightfully concerned about the proliferation of short-term vacation rentals in their neighborhoods and wanted some kind of regulation placed on it. So an urgency ordinance was the method to do that. That has been extended since that time with the promise of delivering a more comprehensive ordinance for our community. After the ordinance was extended, city council created a subcommittee specific to outreach, and I believe there was at least one town hall, if not two, town hall meetings held, and a lot of really good discussion in the community, and ultimately one meeting of discussion at the planning commission level in 2018. We have 250 permits that have been issued in residential areas, which correlates with the cap. We have 13 permitted STRs in the commercial areas. There is no cap on STR activity in commercial zones. Based on concerns that there are more, or were more than 250 operating short-term vacation rentals in our community, from observations from neighbors, phone calls we've received, and just general perceptions about continued proliferation, the city engaged with Host Compliance, which is a firm that specializes in scouring the internet for all online hosting sites, from the major ones like Airbnb down to the boutique-style ones that we don't know about, we never wouldn't care to know about, except that it's important to our community. So using the firm of Host Compliance, they know what's happening. They know who's advertising, they know who's renting, and that is invaluable information for us to know who's operating and comparing that list to our permitted list of STRs. So we know, since we've launched in 2019, that we have less than 250 active short-term vacation rentals. Our first swing at it, we found probably 20 to 30 that were non-compliant. In other words, they were operating illegally. And many have come in and since joined the list of those on the waiting list, and others just ceased activity altogether, and we never heard from them again. The nice thing about Host Compliance is it's a continual operation. They continue to do this, and we just check in to see how things are going. So it's an invaluable tool that is paid for by short-term vacation rental owners through their annual assessment. At present, we have 216 active STRs across the entire city, including commercial zones. 34 we've determined to be non-compliant, so we will be issuing letters, or have, probably already have issued letters to those, and if they don't cease activity, we ratchet up and begin issuing fines. At present, short-term vacation rentals generate typically about $600,000 a year in transit occupancy tax. That's 17% of the total TOT generated. TOT equates to about 24% of the city's total general fund revenues. So it is a critical piece to our overall ability to provide services to our community. Council considered an ordinance in August, or will consider an ordinance in August at the next meeting, to prohibit granting new short-term vacation rentals until the new ordinance is adopted and in effect. In other words, until city council has approved and city coastal commission has approved the ordinance. And that's to sort of keep, stem the tide from new ones joining, and allows us to sort of address some of the complexities that are, will be discussed later in the ordinance. We, based on kind of original ideas, we were going to do the short-term vacation rental ordinance after the general plan and local coastal program was adopted. We've run into some snags there, and so city council made the decision to move short-term vacation rentals ahead of that process. It's a big key priority issue in our community, obviously, and we want to address the issues that have been raised at town hall meetings, ultimately trying to strike the balance of competing or issues about neighborhood compatibility, quality of life, and overall economics and property rights. These things can be held intention, and our job is to try to find a proper balance between those important considerations. And last but not least, the coastal commission weighs in on this, because any change to STR ordinance affects our local coastal program, and they must approve that. And thankfully, many other communities have gone before us in that process, and we've learned a lot from those who have succeeded and those who have failed. And most of those who have succeeded have gone through a community process like the one we engaged upon. So with that goal in mind of creating balance, we also thought it was important to have balance amongst the community members themselves that are participating in the committee. So we had three STR owners or operators, three community members who had voiced concerns about proliferation of short-term vacation rentals, or just the overall impact on neighborhood compatibility and quality of life. We had one planning commissioner and one hotelier, and we had three substitutes to fill in for those three categories of folks. It was facilitated by Mayor Heading and Councilmember McPherson, and I staffed that committee, and Scott Graham helped out as well. The committee focused on establishing early on their goals and values to drive their work, and I will read through this, because it is important that folks on the call or participating via Zoom understand kind of what drove the work of this committee. One, the new ordinance must be enforceable. It can't just be a paper ordinance. It has to have teeth. There must be funds to ensure that this ordinance is enforced. It must include broad public input. It must achieve balance across the various stakeholders in the community. Establish requirements to ensure the safety and well-being of residential neighborhoods, as well as the maintenance of a neighborhood's character. Establish requirements to provide for reasonable property rights for all stakeholders. Should assist in ensuring economic sustainability and tourism for the city from both a public and private perspective. Be compatible with the city's zoning code and zoning designations. Be based on data and best practices. Consider housing affordability during ordinance development, and be reviewed one year following enactment to determine results and possible changes. And important in that is that the committee agreed through ground rules to engage in civil discourse. And I think we've all learned in recent years that that's been sorely missing at certain levels of government or in society, but that doesn't seem true here in Morro Bay. It seems like folks have strong opinions and feelings on things, but have found ways to have reasonable dialogue, even where there are differences. And this committee definitely shone through on that, and I'm very proud of the work that they were able to accomplish, in trying to understand each other, hear different perspectives, stay true to their values and their positions, but be willing to compromise in areas where they can find common ground. And that drove a lot of the work that they did. They met 12 times between October 2019 and February 2020. They looked at material, like other ordinances and best practices through industry folks, looked at the input collected from two town hall meetings and the community survey that was conducted late last year, and looked at a summary of STR ordinances that had been approved by the coastal commission to glean information from that around the more sensitive areas of the ordinance. They deliberated on each aspect one at a time and strove for consensus. And as you'll see in this presentation, most areas are able to come to consensus. There are, of course, areas where there was disagreement, which is the subject of most of the public comments that you've received and probably will hear tonight. And they used a voting methodology to kind of, to address those issues. Following the completion of that work, the city attorney's office was tapped to turn sort of those policy recommendations into legal language, ala an ordinance you have before you tonight. And then the committee reviewed that draft, provided input, and we brought that forward to the planning commission and to the tourism board next, this Thursday. So just to jump into the areas of consensus, I'll try to kind of go through these quickly, but of course, be able to answer the questions you have on this. There is consensus around the purpose, goals, and definitions for the ordinance, which matches the goals in large part that I read to you earlier. And they did differentiate in this section of the ordinance between home share and full home rental. Home share is where a room is rented, but the owner or host, if you will, is present at all times during their guest's stay. And then that is compared to a full home rental, which is where the guest has, you know, a passageway to the entire home, and they're the only folks there. There's no host there onsite. And the committee felt it was important to differentiate, because in some areas, having a host onsite maybe addresses some of the quality of life issues that we've heard from our community members. Jumping into the general section of the ordinance, it outlines the uses that can accommodate short-term vacation rentals and those that can't. It requires that information be made public, which is very important. Things are easily accessible to our community, and they know how to contact the city, contact authorities to complain about issues, to know which homes are operating as STRs. All that information should be easily accessible. In addition, short-term vacation rentals must pay or collect and remit transit occupancy tax, as well as tourism assessments from the city and the county. And an important differentiation from the current ordinance is that there is a minimum outlined in this ordinance for $500 of TOT collected and remitted to the city each year to retain your permit. So in other words, it's a use or lose clause for vacation rental owners. No affordable housing units or mobile home parks shall be converted into STRs. And in addition, there is flexibility in this section where council can adopt further regulations as needed, as we learn and adopt and move forward with this ordinance. The next section provides a description of the application and renewal process. One differentiation here from current practice is that it was important for the committee that this ordinance be enforceable, and there be funding available to provide that enforcement. Currently, we have one part-time code enforcement staff responsible for the entire city. And if we are serious about enforcing a new ordinance, we need to fund that, and it may require another position. So that's something we run deliberations about as staff, but we anticipate that between creating enough funding for a position and inspections, the annual fee could rise to about $500 to $750 annually. We don't know. We want to make sure it's fair and it's reasonable, but it also collects the necessary revenues to pay for that position. The next section is permit denial, suspension, and revocation. So these provide guidelines to address illegal and irresponsible permitted STRs. Very important to our committee that those who don't have licenses are handed a hefty fine, and it's more than just the cost of doing business. And the same goes for those who are just not responding to community concerns, that may have a permit but just aren't operating effectively. And we also outline a process to appeal those denial suspensions or revocations in the section 1741080. Next is the short-term vacation rental operational requirements. So there's a lot in here, so I'll try to cover a lot of ground quickly, but I know we may have some questions on this. So it was important that there be a specified local contact for each short-term vacation rental, with a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week response. And if there are issues, within one hour, that local contact must initiate corrective action. So not four hours, not two hours, within one hour, there must be corrective action being initiated. That doesn't mean that the issue was rectified, it means that the process is beginning. The noise must, noise piece must be in concert with our existing noise ordinance, so that's 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, 50 feet. So it's a pretty reasonable expectation that people have, that they should be able to sleep at normal sleeping hours and not be disrupted by parties and loud noise. Parking will be onsite only in permissible spaces. It can't be on lawns and things like that, but we don't want cars to spread out across on-street parking, which we know in a lot of areas of town, that's a premium. So no on-street parking would be allowed. We're putting a cap on guests. It would be two guests per bedroom plus two, and those young'uns that are less than three years of age would not count towards that cap, but three years and older would. Solid waste must be addressed. You can't have your recycling bins and trash bins out on the curb all week long. It's just like everybody else, they can't be out there but 24 hours before pickup and must be pulled back in 24 hours after pickup. And so concierge services are now still available with the trash company, and that is an outlet for folks who aren't be able to get down to their home and do that. There must be a sign in a prominent location with the key information provided. Those are the phone numbers, really is the most important thing for those who are concerned about issues taking place. The primary renter must be 21 years or older, and a good neighbor brochure must be developed and onsite, and the guest must acknowledge the rules, so that we're all working together. Another area of consensus is around advertising, that anything that's put online, an STR must include their city permit number. Penalties enforcement, again, this has to be, have enough strength to it, where it's more than just the cost of doing business for an illegal operator, or an operator who's just acting irresponsibly and not taking care of issues. Council will have the ability to adopt a resolution on the fine structure that will be far more significant in terms of its penalties than the current one. In other words, $100 isn't really going to do much, but if it's a $250 fine or a $500 fine for first illegal activity, that's going to have more of an effect and maybe disincentivization for those to either conduct illegal activity or just not address issues. So again, it's got to cost more than just doing business. So now we jump into the areas where there has, there was disagreement amongst the committee. They did their best to have very good discussions on this, heated discussions in many cases, but very respectful. And so I'll just kind of go through those. The first is the transferability of a short-term vacation rental permit from one owner to the next. Currently, you can do that through a sale of a home or transfer of ownership of a home, but the group voted 6 to 2 to prohibit the transfer of short-term vacation permits moving forward. They must be issued to a unique property and property owner, and that's it. That's where it resides, and it doesn't move to another family member, it doesn't move when a sale occurs. Some in the group felt there was, there are certain circumstances where maybe an exemption could take place, such as handing it down to a family member of this part of inheritance or something like that, but the group overwhelmingly supported not allowing any exemptions on that. A big area of discussion, at least in California, particularly with the housing crisis sort of still lingering behind COVID, just kind of stealing all the headlines, but prior to that, it was housing in California, which was our major concern, and it hasn't gone away. Excessively dwelling units have sort of been seen as one of the keys to our, the overall patchwork to address the housing crisis, the relatively affordable compared to, you know, full-size homes. And so the committee felt, moving forward on a 5 to 3 vote, that ADUs should not be able to carry a short-term vacation rental permit, because theory goes that you're sort of taking what could be a long-term affordable rental off the market for short-term uses. So moving forward, those that may already have a short-term vacation rental permit would allow to retain that, so long as they're not in violation of other parts of the draft ordinance. The state law has made it clear, at least in our interpretation, that ADU should really be seen as long-term rental propositions and not short-term rental propositions, so we feel pretty strongly that the state's already kind of engaged in this space, and we want to be in compliance with the state direction. The next area of disagreement was the total number of short-term vacation rentals allowed, both in commercial and residential. By a vote of 5 to 3, the committee voted that there be no cap on commercial short-term rentals, sort of the theory going there, that there's already commercial activity occurring in those areas and potentially not as disruptive as STRs could be in residential. Now, with regard to the residential cap on STRs, there wasn't a clear consensus, there wasn't a clear majority. We had more votes for 250 than any other selected number, but easily could argue that the group just really couldn't come to a conclusion on this one. Three members had 120, and one member had 150. The concern from those members on the other half of that felt that 250 is just too many short-term vacation rentals for a city and community of our size. It's important to note that consistently, we've had about 175 to 200 legally operating short-term vacation rentals in residential zones. That number's come down a bit during COVID, as renters have, or owners have sort of on their own either felt it was inappropriate to rent, or just didn't feel comfortable doing that. But again, the number's typically floating in the 175 to 200 range, just to give you some context. And on average, about 20 short-term vacation rental permits are relinquished each year, mainly from folks who just never use their permits. So there may be an opportunity to reduce that cap further through attrition. One of the other areas that, there's a lot of complexity in this, is the notion of density or how to address proliferation of short-term vacation rentals in any one particular area of town. Lot of discussion about this, and the planning commission in 2018 looked at using feet from a lot, sort of like a radius, either 200 or 250 foot. The committee ultimately voted to, instead of using the radius, they used lots that separate short-term vacation rentals from other short-term vacation rentals, so that there you go, you're trying to create an island of homes and homeowners and long-term renters around short-term vacation rentals, as opposed to being the lone homeowner or long-term renter surrounded by short-term vacation rentals, and trying to find the most effective and consistent approach across the city. And I'll be honest with you, no one methodology is going to solve all the issues, so there was a lot of discussion on this with the committee. So as, what was approved by that 5-3 vote was that there be no fewer than three lots separating one short-term vacation rental from the other, looking sort of left to right, you know, on your same block. Same goes, it can't be a short-term vacation rental across the street from you, or kitty-corner from that home across the street, and there can't be one directly behind you, or kitty-corner from that home behind you, again, trying to create separation from one's short-term vacation rental to another. And this applies to both the home share and the full home. And this applies to both the home share and the full home rental models of short-term vacation rentals. The committee discussed multiple options to create separation or buffer between short-term vacation rentals to address those concerns, and I'm going to try to show you all what this looks like. We first started, this is a, there was plenty of maps that were attached to the staff report, and what we're looking at here is a section of the Beach Track, the north side of town, where we have a pretty big concentration of short-term vacation rentals, probably more so than one other area in town. Just want to zoom out so that folks kind of see where we're looking at, and I made my arrow a little bit bigger in blue, so it's a little easier to identify. So I'm going to zoom back in, and you can see, and these are pretty narrow streets, that there are quite a few vacation rentals. This was a snapshot from late 2019, and we don't believe there's been much turnover of these vacation rentals since that time, so this is probably a reflection of what is true out there right now. So the, these grayed-out parcels are short-term vacation rentals that are permitted with the city. And what I'm going to do is overlay some of the buffer options so that the planning commission can try to understand the thought process to how we move from these buffers to using lot separations. So right now, I'm going to throw on the 250-foot buffer, and it's going to create what appears to be chaos on your screen, so bear with me. So again, these are 250-foot buffers that are measured from the outside parts of each lot, and I'm going to try to provide an example to show sort of the intent, again, is to reduce impact in any one particular area and show what the consequences may be for any one particular method of doing that. So I will look at this home right here, which is on the corner of Sandalwood and Bali. The buffer of 250-foot, you're following my arrow right here, it's capturing any of those short-term vacation rentals as it goes around the circle. So this home, again, on Bali and Sandalwood, if a 250-foot buffer was applied, would affect those that are really close proximity, which is obviously a big concern, but also some that are sort of outside of its immediate adjacency. So a street all the way over on Beach Comer would capture these homes, and this home on the corner of Capri and Coral would also be caught in its radius as well. So there's concern that, you know, while it's addressing one issue, maybe creating another by taking out a bunch of other short-term vacation rentals. So with that buffer, we counted 44 existing permitted STRs in Beach Track area, I'm probably spelling it wrong, sorry. Based on that 250-foot buffer, there were about 25 to 30 conflicts created, and depending on how you would do a lottery, that number could go up or down a little. That means at minimum, more than half, if not much more than half, would be in conflict and would lose their license through this buffer process. We then looked at 200-foot buffer, so I'll take this off, and put the 200-foot buffer, and this is the same home we were looking at, and by and large, it's still capturing this, almost the same number, maybe a fewer, fewer or less, but again, it's hitting parts that are a little separated from its immediate area. And again, that may be the intention or maybe not, but I did an analysis of that, and in that same area of the Beach Track, where there are 44 existing permits for STRs, 24 to 27 would potentially lose their license based on conflict created there. Then, the committee looked at a combination of buffers based on what we had gleaned from the county of San Luis Obispo. They use different methodologies for their beach towns, but in Cayucas, they have a buffer of 100 feet sort of facing to their left and their right and across the street from them, and a smaller buffer from behind, so basically like 100-foot facing outward and 50 in the back. And so when we did 100-foot buffer, it definitely kind of reduces the sphere of influence, if you will, for any one vacation rental. And it maybe didn't seem to really accomplish, like certainly you don't lose as many, but you're also not creating a lot of space between vacation rentals when you want to use that methodology. And that's ultimately what led to the discussion about, well, how about we use lots between STRs? So when we look at that in this case, this, three homes across would be one, two, three. So if this won the lottery, this vacation rental would no longer be able to operate, and nor would there be allowed to have a vacation rental across the street or kitty-corner, nor could there be one behind that home or kitty-corner from that. And so when we did that analysis of existing short-term vacation rentals, we found that in that same area where there's 44 vacation rentals, we would lose 14 to 16. So definitely a drop, and we tried to make this clear to the committee so that they understood sort of the consequences, and that's where that vote came down. This same methodology, when applied citywide, would eliminate or create conflicts between 40 to 50 short-term vacation rentals across the entire city. So in summary, looking at that, when we did the 250-foot buffer in that Beach Track area, we talked about 25 to 30-plus conflicts. When applied citywide, that's 80 to 100-plus citywide conflicts. The 200 had more of a reduced impact from 24 to 27 in Beach Track, 70 to 80-plus citywide, and 150-foot kind of combined was somewhere around 15 to 20 in the Beach Track area and anywhere from 30 to 60 citywide. And then the committee's recommended method, again, 14 to 16 in the Beach Track area and 40 to 50 citywide. And one of the rationale for using the plots is that it sort of normalizes plot size across the city. Some areas' plots are significantly large and others are smaller, sometimes roads are wider and sometimes narrower, so buffers could have a significant impact in one neighborhood and not on another, just based on those factors. The next area of consideration where there was disagreement was the grandfathering of non-conforming short-term vacation rules after the ordinance is adopted. And the main area where there will be non-conformances, that very discussion we just had, which is the buffers or density issue. So we know that there's conflicts based on any buffer methodology you use, whether it's the one that's recommended or a 200 or 250-foot buffer, there will be conflicts. So the question is, how long do those operators have to either come into conformance or lose their license? So a lot of discussion about this, you know, that folks have been paying their dues, they've been paying TOT to the city, they've invested in their properties, they shouldn't lose their license, you know, in a lottery system. Others felt, well, you know, that's too bad, the impact in neighborhoods are significant, and that needs to be addressed and not wait for attrition to take course for those issues to be rectified. So a lot of good discussion on that, and what the group didn't come to consensus on this, but the most votes was for allow for three years to see what happens with attrition. For any conflicts that remain, there would be a lottery, and whoever loses in that lottery process has one year to cycle out. They got three votes. Somebody on the committee felt they should have four years to do that, plus the one, there was one vote for that. Others felt there should be less time, maybe two years, and then the one-year attrition out was two votes, and then one member felt 18 months total was appropriate, and one member felt that there should be full grandfathering of non-conforming uses. So again, there wasn't a predominant position, other than there should be some time to address, let attrition run its course and see where we're at, and then apply a lottery methodology to move forward. So before we jump into the next steps, I just wanted to take a pause to thank the committee members for their numerous hours, the amazing discussions they've had, the various perspectives they brought to the table, and the fact that even though we were talking about some issues where you're diametrically opposed positions, we walked out shaking hands and I'm feeling good about the product. That doesn't mean that committee members support each and every aspect of this ordinance before you tonight, but that they engaged in the process wholeheartedly and created real value for our community, and we're very thankful for the work that they did. So next steps is, before you tonight, is the planning commission review, and the Tourism Business Improvement District will review this on Thursday. Obviously, the planning commission review and recommendation is sort of the legal piece, so we want to make sure we have concrete recommendations from this committee to council. Council will review and adopt September or October timeframe, and then it must go to the California Coastal Commission for ultimate approval. It cannot go into effect until they weigh in. So we don't have a formal recommendation, other than we believe the committee did an amazing job, and they put a lot of thought into this, and I want to thank Elena, who is the city attorney who worked in converting the policy recommendations into a formal ordinance, a lot of work went into that process. So we feel good about the work, but we know there'll be a lot of good discussion tonight, and what moves forward will represent well the good work that the committee did. So I'm here tonight to answer any process questions you may have. Scott Graham can answer zoning code or planning questions, and then Elena Gurley is our city attorney who helped on this process, she can answer legal questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. I think at this point, we'll do, we normally have questions from the commissioners at this point, but I think I'd like to have the public comment, and then that way, we'll have all of the issues out front that then we, the commissioners can then question you, Scott, staff, or Scott Graham on these issues, and we can have our discussion then. So if we could have, at this time, we'll open up public comment for item B1, and speakers will have three minutes to comment if you have unique points of view, that would be great if you could express those. Okay, do we have any speakers in the queue?
Yes, sir. First speaker up will be Tony LaGrasse, and you are online, sir.
Oh, I'm, I'm machine. That's okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name's Tony LaGrasse, and I have a vacation rental business. We have property in Morro Bay, Cayucas, and Cambria, and I think they did a great job putting together these recommendations. The one that I really have trouble with, though, is the lottery. I don't think that that is a good, I don't think that's a fair and reasonable thing to ask of people who are invested, who actually don't have any fines or a record of wrongdoing. That, to me, just seems really, really unfair. There's other things that are going to, eventually, that'll all work out. You've got the non-transferability aspect, you've got increased fees. I expect that the 20% annual dropout of licenses will increase after the fees and all these new changes are implemented, but anyway, that's the main issue that I see, and I think you would be inviting a legal challenge, and I'm not sure if that's something you want to spend money on. Some of the owners would probably be very upset about it. So anyway, thank you for all the work, and that's my comment.
Thank you, Tony. Do we have another, the next speaker, please?
Yes, sir. Caller with the phone number ending in 453, you are on the air. You have to press star nine to be able to talk.
Yes, good evening, and thank you, and good evening, commissioners, and thank you, Mr. Collins, for an excellent summary. My name is Patrick Vaughn, and I have lived on Beach Comer Drive for the last 38 years. I've witnessed a dramatic change on that street, as well as the Beach Track and city in general, since the development of the vacation rental industry. There was a newspaper article today, which was not completely accurate, but since it is where many get their information, I wish to reference it. As stated, we do have 250 STRs in residential and 13 in commercial. The ordinance recommends maintaining the residential cap at 250, but the newspaper article also says we'll have likely closer only to 200 in residential areas due to the attrition and due to the fees, the attrition due to fees and spacing. But we also have 90 homes on a waiting list, and that has not been discussed. I can't believe those are going to be conflicted by spacing or unwilling to pay the fees. If the ordinance does force out some of the lower revenue generators, which it will do, they will likely be replaced with busy rentals that will impact the neighborhoods to a greater degree. I do not believe the residential cap should be 250, but rather a more reasonable number of 200. This number would be more consistent with the desires of the ad hoc committee, four of which members wanted under 200 rentals, and four wanted more than 200 rentals. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find a city of our size or a residential of 10,000 residents that have 200 vacation rentals. My second concern is concerning the planned separation of vacation homes. The ordinance, in its present form, would allow for any residential home to have up to three vacation rental properties, touch their property beside it, behind it, and across the street, and to have these vacation rentals as close as 50 feet apart. I agree this is an unlikely scenario, but I can't believe we would want that to befall anyone, so why have an ordinance that allows it? I could not find one ordinance that used this method of house separation up and down the coast. I ask you to forego this poorly worded and confusing section of the ordinance and replace it with a clear 200 to 250-foot circular separation. Mr. Collins did speak about the Beach Track, which has two to three times as many vacation rentals as other sections of the city. When you put those circles in other sections, it does not look as bad. Homeowners should also realize having a busy vacation rental next door may reduce your home resale value and take it longer to sell, and I do believe the Coastal Commission would gladly accept this recommended cap and spacing, as they have already accepted stricter ordinances in other close-by communities. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Patrick. And the next speaker, please?
Meredith, you are on the line.
This is Meredith Bates, Morro Bay resident. Good evening to the planning commission and staff. I was part of the Short-Term Rentals Subcommittee, and I was really pleased with how we worked together, and we did a lot of work, believe me. We spent time out of the meetings, researching, looking at other ordinances, and we, as Scott said, we worked together well, respectfully, even though we always didn't agree. And our goal was to have a balance and to come to consensus, but we didn't always come to consensus. And I think you have seen a ton of correspondents come in in the past few days, people expressing their opinions, many who have the same opinion I do in one area in particular about the cap. I feel that 250 is too high. There are other communities about our size, or if they're bigger, per 10,000 residents, there's maybe 100 short-term rentals in their cap. So it doesn't make sense to me that we would have that many. Another thing I want to comment on is the Good Neighbor brochure, which I think is going to be a wonderful idea, but we didn't really emphasize that it also needs to be handed out to all the neighbors in the surrounding area from the short-term rental, because then, if I'm a neighbor, I'll know what the rules are, I'll know who to call, I'll know what the noise ordinance times are. And... are and exactly where the short-term rental is, if it's in my neighborhood, which right now I have none in my neighborhood, actually. Another thing that we talked about and I think would be great is that in a year, there's a follow-up because we're trying something out. I mean, it'd be have to be a year after it gets to the coastal commission and passes. But after one year, kind of see how everything's worked. Maybe we won't even need a lottery. That's a possibility. Maybe there'll be other alternatives to a lottery. And I know some of the committee members have already said they'd be interested in serving on that follow-up committee. And I think that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Meredith. And thanks for serving on the committee. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, you're on the line.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi. I am Judy Brown. And I would like to say a few things about the vacation rental. I have submitted several letters. So just a couple of things I'd like to touch on. Number one, do these vacation rentals screen for Megan's law? And do they also screen for human trafficking? There have been incidences where vacation rentals were used to create pornography as well as other human trafficking type problems. So that's an issue. Also, do we really want sex offenders in our neighborhoods? So I asked that question of VR owners on nextdoor.com. And two people replied and said they let their management companies decide what to do about that. They don't have anything to do with it. And no one else responded. So no one has been able to answer my question about whether VR tenants are screened for sex offenses. I would like that to be a requirement. Next question is, or next thing I'd like to comment on is I would like no VRs in residential neighborhoods standalone. That said, I would like unlimited homestay rentals to be made available to any neighbors that need additional income. I feel that this would also create a much better visitor environment for our town. We would have the opportunities. I personally am not going to do it. I have nothing invested in this. I don't own any VRs or homestay properties. But as, I would like to see locals overseeing the visiting status of visitors. They can give them local referrals. They can show them the inside skinny that the locals enjoy. They can turn them into the type of visitors that do not clash with our coastal culture. And that's what I think is happening here very often. We are having valley culture clashing with coastal culture and near the twain shall meet. I will not say anything more about that at this point. I would like to see one year for the transition to whatever the ordinance ends up being. The city does not have any obligation to ensure that people who made vacation rental investments, they don't have any obligation to them. Anyone who buys property and wishing to rent it out knows that things can change, just like a person such as myself who bought a property and lives in it with my family. We don't VR it, yet things can change. We had long-term neighbors. Now we don't. Now we have an unpermitted vacation rental next to us. So the point being that if you don't have a VR on your street now at any time in the future, you could have that. I do not want that for my town. We, we weave the fabric of our neighborhoods. We work on our neighborhood relationships. And so churning vacation rentals with visitor after visitor, day after day, and new faces everywhere, that is not the stuff of solidarity in neighborhoods. That is not the stuff of long-term relationships and neighbors. Okay, I think that's pretty much everything. Thank you all for listening and I thank the committee very much for their help.
Okay. Thank you very much, Judy. Next speaker, please.
Caller with the phone number ending in three, two, seven. You're on the line. You have to press star nine to be able to speak. Caller, phone number ending in three, two, seven. You are on the line. Press star nine to be able to speak. Well, maybe they're having trouble with that. Would you like to move on or?
Yeah, let's go ahead and move on to the next one and we'll, we'll try them right, right after this next speaker.
Okay. And Betty Winholtz, you are on the line.
Thank you very much. This is Betty Winholtz. I will just highlight some of my comments that I mailed in and not, like you say, do those that have already been talked about unless they're different. I would like to know, because it's in the ordinance, who designates and what is the definition of affordable housing units? I think that term affordable varies. And I'd like to know if you're using those that are like section eight or are you seeing those that are defined in another ordinance, but I think that needs to be clarified. I also agree that 250 is too high of a cap and it should be more like 150. And that this should include the whole town. And my rationale for that is that we already have long-term residents in our commercial zones. And I don't know that they need to be penalized. And I don't think that people who live downtown necessarily choose to live downtown, but maybe that's what they've come to for availability. And so I think the whole town should be limited to the 150 or the 175. Don't forget that we have hotels, that those people can pick up whatever slack there is, or we think that there is with not having enough. I actually agree with the former speaker who said that they would prefer hosted as opposed to unhosted in our community, in our neighborhoods. I have no problem with that either. I think that's a fair thing. I really hope that you talk about the density. You know, Los Osos went with linear feet and I believe it was 900 because their intent was that you only have one vacation rental per block. And I think that's kind of a nice way to keep your neighborhood together. I know we have some short blocks, some long blocks, so that may need to be ferried out, but I think we need to really talk about density. And of course, the phasing out, and I would totally agree that it should not take four years. It should not take three years. I would look at the one year as how long it would take to do that. And finally, I'd like to have you ask the question of the attorney, since it was raised. Is there a legal challenge to holding a lottery or is there not? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can we try the previous speaker?
Yes, sir. I will ask her to unmute and, or them to unmute. Caller with number ending in three, two, seven, please unmute and speak to us. Hit star nine on your phone. Caller, three, two, seven, number, hello? Are you there? I can hear you.
Yeah, she's, she's not coming through.
Yeah. Okay. Her phone.
So let's move to the next speaker. Maybe you can get the highlights of her comments and relay them to us if we can't get this to work.
All right. Well, I don't have any way of finding that, but I can go to the next speaker. Robert Elzer. You are on the line.
Hello?
There you go. You're here.
Hello. Thank you, planning commission for having this meeting and allowing us to speak. My name is Robert Elzer. I'm the owner or manager of Urelax Vacation Rentals based out of Morro Bay. There's a lot of issues surrounding the vacation rental situation, of course. And one of them that was brought up as part of the short-term committee to address was the impact on housing. So there's a few points with housing that I'd like to discuss. It has been brought up by the city before that Morro Bay has about 20% or more of the homes as second homes. That works out to around 1,200 homes. As a reminder, active licensed vacation rentals are only about 175 or a touch more. The rest are inactive. If through a lottery system or some other way, these homes have their permits taken away, there's a very good chance that they'll just be kept as a second home. If they sell, it's, it's very likely that they could be purchased by someone who's looking for a second home or possibly a retiree to the area. And that doesn't help the local housing situation. And of course, some of them will just choose unfortunately to become illegal rentals. And in theory, those are easy to combat. In practice, they can be much harder and the illegal rentals will get much more sophisticated in how they're trying to evade all these kind of punishments. The next point is, you know, how severe is the problem with licensed vacation rentals? We know that illegal rentals provide their own challenges and those should be addressed certainly. But we do have to point out that the vast majority of licensed rentals don't have a single complaint, not, not just a verified complaint, but a complaint of any, any type. We hear kind of anecdotally about issues with vacation rentals, but we don't always know if, if the issue actually arises from a licensed vacation rental. There's illegal rentals out there. There's second homes. People who have second homes would have their friends and family visit. Those homes can create issues and from the outside, they could appear like they're vacation rentals, but in fact, they're not. I think we need a lot more information on which homes are causing trouble and are they actually licensed vacation rentals before we go and we start taking harsh action against these people who have always been in conformity. They've always followed the rules. They've always paid their tax and now they have the threat of their license being taken away. I think we need more evidence about the impact of licensed vacation rentals before we do that harsh action of taking people's license away. I, I think that we should let attrition do its job. It's already been pointed out that 20 licenses will go away each year. Let's let attrition do it. We do have owners who move into their homes. People sell vacation rentals. They won't be transferable and new rentals won't be able to come in with the same density because of the spacing. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Robert. Do we have a next speaker in the queue?
Yes, sir. We are going to try speaker with the phone number ending in three, two, seven again. I can hear them on the line. Speaker with ending in three, two, seven. You are on the line.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. I've been trying hard. This is Dan Sibley from Morro Bay. I wanted to talk about the short-term vacation rentals. One of the biggest things that people do not know is the number to complain to. And I know that there would be far more complaints if people knew who to contact. Can this be rectified by a sign in legal rentals, front yard? Can it be rectified by posting the number on the city website? Can it be rectified by naming that telephone number right now? The, the, the proposed ordinance talks about density. The density, as Scott Collins mentioned, the density changes all throughout the town. In northern Morro Bay, the house, many houses are on postage stamp lots. So what, what may be a, a, a distance that's acceptable in the south part of town and the north part of town is very, very close. And so I, I am in favor of there actually being a, a, a linear foot limit named to prevent the parts of town that have these postage stamp lots. In regards to the cap for the short-term vacation rentals, I'm, I'm in favor of lowering that to 150. I don't think for the residential areas, that is, I, I don't think our town is big enough. And I think that, that too many short-term vacation rentals ruins the integrity of our town of neighbors knowing their neighbors and so on and so forth. I disagree with, with the occupancy for full home rentals being two persons per bedroom plus two. I, I think that that just overpopulates a house. It, it increases the number of cars that won't fit in the driveway. It increases the likelihood of being a party house. I think that strictly the limitation should be two persons per bedroom and that's it. Mr. Collins talked about increasing the fines. I am completely in agreement with him. The fines do need to be discouraging and not just laughable. That's all of my comments. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dan. Next caller, please.
Beth Michelson. You are on the air.
Hi, can you folks hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Um, I want to thank Scott Collins tremendously. He has been very gracious in responding to my emails to him. So thank you, Scott. I think I'm a resident of Morro Bay and I am next to a vacation rental. My windows are 20 feet from the window of the vacation rental and the balcony. I think it's imperative that people come out and look at the home before they approve it as a vacation rental. I think it's important that there is neighborhood compatibility. I'm curious how many calls it takes prior to having the permit revoked for the vacation rental. I also am in very much agreement with everything that Judy Brown said. And I guess the main thing is that so many people that live in Morro Bay are, are retirees and we come to the community not to bargain for the noise and the threats, which I have received from the vacation rental. So if you folks could look at those things, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Beth.
All right.
Do, do we have any more callers?
Yes, sir. Maggie Jerrin. You are on the line.
Hi, can the people hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, good. I submitted a letter, so I'm not going to go over that correspondence. But I did want to, you know, I hear what the community is saying and I totally understand that. But my concern is we've put a lot of effort into creating what we feel like are very strict vacation rentals. Everyone has to acknowledge that up to this point and even the city government folks, Scott and company will.
Maggie, I think we lost you.
What?
Okay. Maggie, you're back on the line.
Oh, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that. I don't know what happened. Anyway, you know, I think we've with this ordinance, put a lot of teeth in it. And I'm just really asking the community, you know, some of the points are very important that other people have brought up, which is we need to make that contact information very readily available to the public, both on, you know, the city website and by signs in the yard. We are going to do the home inspections as other people have suggested. We're, we're not transferring licenses through sale. We're control, we're putting stuff in place to do parking. We've certainly accounted with the permit fees accounted for the ability to fund this effort. So if you're charging each vacation rental $750 or 500 or whatever, this should fund a person and be able to, that can enforce this. So all I'm asking of the community is yes, we know you've had a very bad experience up till this, and many of you have anecdotal stories about very bad experiences. But what we've tried to do as a committee is to put some teeth to this and give the city the funding and the, and the backup of their, of, of the ordinance to enforce some of this. So we really feel like it can be better and we can live together more, more marginously, I guess. You know, it's, but I just feel like give these, these laws a chance before you try, start trying to shut things down, reduce the cap, you know, put. trying to shut things down, reduce the cap, you know, put in a lottery. Let us try to be good actors. We do everything we can to control our people, but, you know, we all know you can't have control over all of them, but we depend on our neighbors to report that, and we take immediate action. So I'm just reaching out to the community to ask for their patience, and let these new rules take effect, and see if we can't control the problem, and make it, and make it a win-win for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Maggie. Next panelist, please.
P. Goresby, you are on the line.
Hello, my name is Peki Goresby, and we are owners of a vacation rental there in Morro Bay. Excuse me. I just wanted to make a couple of points. And first of all, I do want to thank you for your time on this issue. I know how challenging it is, because you cancel, you're not going to please everybody, and I know you want to do the best for the community. I just want to tell you a couple of things. I read through all of the letters that were posted on the website yesterday, and there were a lot of comments that I think were kind of slams to rental owners. And so I just want, if you would indulge me, I'd just like to tell you very quickly our story. We bought our home in Morro Bay in 2007 through a 1031 exchange. We had a little tiny piece of property, farming property. We sold that property to buy our, what was going to be, or what we hope will be our retirement home in Morro Bay. During the 13 years that we have owned that property, we have tried very hard to be good neighbors, and have not had any complaints. Three of the four properties that it bought us have sold during that time, and so now we're one of the longest-term property owners in that area. So I just think that that's important to know, that, you know, sometimes the rental owner has been there as long or longer than your full-time property owners. And also, one of the things that I hear repeatedly is about the concerns of the renters or the tenants, and it's kind of this assumption that full-time residents don't make noise, and don't park their cars in the street, and don't have issues or yapping dogs. And I don't think any of us could say that that's entirely true. So while we can deal with those things for a few days, sometimes if we have an unfortunate situation with a tenant, it's not like living next door to someone who's there 24/7, 265 days of the year. But beyond that, the one question that I have for your city attorney is in regards to the 1031 exchange process. Now, what would happen to an owner like us if we were to lose our permit, no longer be able to rent the property, it's no longer an investment, and it then becomes a tax liability with the Internal Revenue Service? I just wonder if that's where there could be concerns from owners who potentially could lose their permits. And I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Nick Jerrin, you are on the line. Nick Jerrin?
Nick, we can't, we can't hear you at this point.
You have to unmute your microphone.
Let's move on to the next speaker then, and we'll come back to you. Oh, there, we can hear you now.
Sorry, just having a little technology problem. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we all have that problem, so.
Okay, now, I'm Nick Jerrin. I'm the owner with Maggie Jerrin of Beach and Bay Getaways, and it's really sad that we're not any closer. You know, what I don't, what I don't hear everyone saying is the recognition, number one, that we're a tourist town, and we're a tourist economy. And the vacation, and not all vacation rentals are created equal. Actually, our company with You Relax, we manage only 36 of the 250 rentals that are licensed, and we actually contribute over 40% of the total TOT. And why is that? Well, that's because the rentals we post are the ones where people want to stay. And people have mentioned that they'll just stay at the Motel 6. That's really not, not the fact. People moving here have accepted that moving to a tourist town. I'm dismayed everywhere I, everywhere I go at how things have changed. And really, that's what people want to do here. They want to hold Morro Bay as a place and time. I would love that, too, but the city will reach its demise if that happens. You know, I am not against regulations. I think the regulations that have been proposed are sound. There's now one violation against vacation rentals. That's where the city has its exposure. If a lottery is held someday, based on the numbers that Scott's provided, those are the numbers of individuals that'll be in the class action suit against the city. It'll be very sad. And the city will have nothing to say, because they just started enforcement today. And the fines that'll be collected, and we're for those, I hope it does fund enforcement. Our rentals are compliant, we're good actors, and we contribute most of the tax, but you would put us out of business. The real problem is, for every vacation rental, you have a second home in the city, approaching 25%. You mentioned on the call, you have a problem with unlicensed rentals. This, the operating vacation rentals like mine will pay for that enforcement and help quell the problem. Have moderation. Let the rules take effect. Don't kill the goose that's helping fund the city and the city services. Vacation rentals alone welcome 25,000 guests a year to your city, and many of them are just like you, California residents, and they just didn't get here first. So please, all I ask is create, have moderation. I am for grandfathering. That's what the county does, that's what everyone else does, to avoid the lawsuits. The city has tremendous exposure. That's all I have to say. I hope that you moderate and give the new rules a chance, because they're, for the first time, the city is enforcing them. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you very much, Nick. Next speaker, please. We're not getting...
Yeah, I'm not sure what was wrong with his signal.
Okay, we're having a problem on this. Let's, let's go ahead and move on to the next speaker.
Okay. All right. David Zip?
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thank you.
Great. Hello, I'm a resident of Morro Bay, and I strongly believe that the hosted STR should be treated differently.
Oh, sorry. Could you please say your name, especially because we're on...
Yeah, sure. My name is David Zip.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. So I operate a hosted STR in my house. My wife and I, of course, we live here in the house. We always know what's going on with our STR, all the time. It's a, you know, there's drywall in between us and the STR. We always know what's going on. We provide a very unique, personalized vacation stay product for our visitors. We advise our visitors on where to eat, what to see, and we make sure that they have a quality stay during their time in Morro Bay. And frankly, that's a vacation stay product that a hotel can't provide. There are many people that are looking for exactly this type of experience, instead of the classic standard hotel experience. I'd also like to point out that being able to count on the income from our STR is a large part of my strategy, to be able to afford to live in Morro Bay. All the income I'm receiving from my STR, I spend in Morro Bay. I keep it in Morro Bay. I need this income to be able to live in Morro Bay. So I strongly believe that hosted STR should be prioritized under any ordinance structure. I'll point out that I have invested in my home, and I have reconfigured it to facilitate hosted STR. These are reconfigurations that I need to turn around and pay to undo at this point. Not looking forward to that, if I could even afford to continue to live in Morro Bay. So please remember that the Morro Bay economy is driven by tourism. I would encourage neighbors to report the bad actors. The focus should be on illegal rentals and enforcement, and I would say that the lottery approach looks extremely problematic. I hope the city doesn't step into that mess. I would grandfather all STRs and allow attrition to do, to do the work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Next speaker, please.
Okay, we're going to try Recede again. Recede, you are on the line. You can unmute your microphone.
Hello, this is Rick Daxler. Are you able to hear me?
Much better, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for addressing this issue. I hope that you've read my comments that I sent last week. I hope the planning commission will make their decision based on long-range needs of Morro Bay residents, and not just short-term financial issues. Once our housing stock and affordability housing improve, then maybe consider allowing vacation businesses in residential areas. Scott's density arguments focused only on keeping as many vacation rentals as possible, and not on the needs of the residents. Three lots is ridiculously small and almost worthless. Slow County Planning Commission just passed the 500-foot buffer for Los Osos area, using the decades-old Cayucas and Cambria's 100-foot...
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure what happened, but he...
Okay, I think we lost him on that. Let's move on to the next speaker, and maybe we can try to get him back.
Okay, next speaker in the queue is Judy Brown. I'm not sure if she's spoken on this item or not.
I believe she's spoken already.
Okay, so we'll go to the next speaker then. Lauren, you are online.
Hi, this is Lauren Liedinger. I am a resident of Morro Bay, and I don't want to repeat what other people have said. I did, have said, I did send in my comments yesterday, so I hope everyone has read those. I just want to say that I moved here 10 years ago, because it was a quiet community, a safe community, to raise my three children, and good schools. And, you know, I see both sides of the issues of being more restrictive, and these comments have been very enlightening. I really want to emphasize, I haven't heard it much here tonight, the need to really crack down on these illegal rentals. Unfortunately, I have a lot of experience with it, as it sounds like some others may have, of an illegal rental right across the street, and the blocking my mailbox, and parking issues, and we're, you know, this is something I have to deal with as a resident here, and it's extremely frustrating. So I would like to know the complaint number. I have sent emails. I've never heard back from anyone to know if my issue was addressed. And to me, enforcement is a huge issue, and if, if it is, you know, turns out that it's a lot of bad apples, spoiling it for the good, you know, vacation rental people out there, then why don't we take care of this? It's, it's just extremely frustrating. So I really, really hope that more money is put into investment, follow-up is done, and that responses are made to the residents to let us know if action has been taken. Thanks so much for your work on this. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Mayor? Excuse me, we have the last caller that cut out on us. Should we try again?
Let's try him again.
Okay. Caller, you are on the line. Would you unmute?
Okay, this is Rick Daxler again. Am I, I think I'm online.
Yeah, you're clear.
Yeah, the previous, you know, the two communities, Cayucas and Cambria, they, they're trying to increase their buffer also. I think two...
I think they're having some real communication problems.
Yeah, okay, let's move on to the next.
There are no more people in the queue with their hands up that haven't talked before.
Okay, can we try again on, on the last caller?
We shall try again, yes, let's try again.
Give him one more chance?
Mm-hmm. I think it's a wireless connection. We do have some more people in the queue, though. Shall I go to them?
Yeah, let's go to them.
Disable that one, and Kristen, you are on the line.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Headland. I'm a 30-year resident here in North Morro Bay. I've heard a lot of comments this evening, so I'll try not to repeat any of those, but I do have some priorities. I did send in a letter. So I live on the Island Streets on Urbabuena, and all of our lots are 40 by 60. And so for me, I have a big concern about this three-lot buffer. If that were to be implemented, then basically, every fourth house would, could possibly be a vacation rental. And for me, that's just a little bit too close. As it is right now, I have a vacation rental directly across the street from me that's been there for seven years. I'm kind of, my priority is to see if maybe you could implement the 250 buffer around vacation rentals. I think that the transition period is too long. I would like to see a little bit more movement by having it a two-year period. Let's see. I think that, for me, the 250 vacation rental cap is awfully high. I would like it to be 150. And I do have a little bit of a concern that, for the residential area, there'll be 250 vacation rentals, and from what I understand, along North Main Street, we have commercial residential zoning, and those locations could also turn into vacation rentals. I think that could change the whole neighborhood, and we would be impacted by traffic. We have a Delmar School. We have a 10-acre parcel on Main Street that may get developed if someone buys it. We have the jet fuel tank, 10 acres, where housing development may come about. So I have grandkids. I'm also concerned about Megan's Law, and yes, when people come across the street, I'm always wondering, that always pops in my mind. I'm very familiar with Megan's Law, having worked in with... having worked in with, in the forensic department. So the other thing is like, on the city website, could you possibly make sure that there's an area where people can just open it up? And there's a link there where it has all the paperwork involved with vacation rentals. You don't have to be clicking around and the municipal codes and so on. And those are my comments. And I want to thank everyone who has worked on this project for several years, started with the G-PAC and having the community members on the STR group and their valuable 12-week participation, the planning commission and the city staff. And my main concern is the 40 by 60 lots here in North Morro Bay with a three-lot buffer. Thank you very much, and I look forward to listening to the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker.
Yes, Chair Lorr. Next speaker is Linda. Linda, you are online.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine, thank you.
My name is Linda Rieger, and I am a resident. I don't want to repeat, just like other people, but I think something needs to be pointed out. If we have a 250 limit or cap, you're not going to have more and more of this developing. So the last woman's comments seemed a little confusing to me because they were inconsistent. I do think the three-house buffer is a really good idea with the cap of, you know, 250 and grandfather clause in. I have to say that on the street that I live on, we've had no problems. And I appreciate all the tax dollars that go to fund our city and to keep people employed and to keep my neighbors, you know, able to stay in Morro Bay. It's an incredible place, and I do think that we're very, very fortunate to get to live here. And I think we need to keep that in mind, not try to keep everybody out. I also wanted to thank the committee. I think you guys have done an incredible job, and I really do appreciate all the time and energy that has gone into this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Linda. Next speaker.
Chair Lorr, we have no more people in the queue with their hands raised.
Okay, is there, can we try the gentleman that we had technical problems with? Is he still in line?
He seems to have, oh, here he is, hold on.
Let's give him one more shot here.
All right. And Speaker, you are on the line.
Still having technical difficulties with him, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll close public comment at this point and bring it back to the commission. There were some main points that got made, and maybe we can go over a couple of them. And then I can, I'll kind of go through my notes, and then maybe somebody else's. We'll see where we are at that point.
Gary, if we could, before that, I had a couple of questions. Actually, Jerry, before that, do you want ex parte?
Yes. I figured this wasn't an item that needed ex parte, but let's go ahead and do ex parte. And then we'll go through the questions then.
Yeah, I'll just state that I think before the committee structure was really going, the jurins visited my home unsolicited, and we did speak about their work. And when we were looking at the preface to the housing element, Commissioner Stewart and I had some extremely brief discussions about what could be impacts on the housing element based on which her experience was with this. But we didn't take any significant notes on that. It was just reflections.
Okay, anybody else have ex parte communications? I know Susan was on the committee, so I'm sure there were, you know, that's obvious. I'll have to say also that I have done several vacation rental projects, but I have no financial interest in any of them at this point. So that was past work done for conversions. And so I don't believe that would disqualify me from commenting on this item, but maybe Scott could comment on that. Scott Graham?
I'm coming. No, he should be fine, as long as you're not financially invested in any of them. Should be fine.
No, no, I weren't. Okay, then we either go to questions or we go to comments on the comments. So let's go to questions. You guys have been patiently sitting there. So Jesse, if you had some questions you wanted to ask?
Well, specifically, yeah, if I could ask questions of Scott and Scott and maybe Elena, I'm not sure. But it got brought up repeatedly about the possibility of lawsuits. So before we go too much further, I think it's wise for me to ask the question. I mean, how, what is the potential liability there and what's the exposure? With the lottery?
Well, you know, the lottery, and by the way, good evening, everyone. My name is Eleanor Gerli. I'm with the City Attorney's Office. So the lottery is a fairly, is a commonly used mechanism to assign permits when there are more applicants than permits. And, you know, possible issues that could arise usually have to do with due process. But, you know, if we put in a system that provides the necessary due process, we should be okay. That won't necessarily prevent people from suing. But generally speaking, it's a commonly used process. So I don't foresee liability for the city. But of course, you know, before we put in any provisions relating to a lottery, we would do a deep dive into any potential additional issues and make suggestions and recommendations to the council. So, you know, we're several years down the line from there. So this is just a generic response at this point.
Right.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, Jesse.
I'm sorry. One more question, if we could, about, is there anything in the ordinance? I didn't see anything in the ordinance about sunsetting of permits. And it didn't seem, when I talked to Scott and Scott via email earlier, that that was something that had been discussed. Well, something that was in the ordinance. There's nothing in the ordinance at this point for sunsetting of permits, right? An expiration, I should say.
No, no, nothing in there. And, you know, the committee briefly discussed this when we were talking. I want to say either around the grandfathering or the density, those are sort of mixed together as discussions. And again, the issue there being, if there's a turnover, it gives other community members a shot at a vacation rental, you know, and the business that comes along with that. But it didn't gain traction amongst the group, and we moved on to that.
Those are my two questions and answers.
Okay, Joseph?
Yeah, you guys can hear me?
Yes.
Never sure with this device. Questions for Elena. With respect to the due process arguments that might be part of a lawsuit, I think it's pretty easy to overcome that. But how about the notion of it being an unreasonable taking of property? Have any, in any of the jurisdictions, have a plaintiff's been successful that you know about?
Right, I think this is a question that was forwarded to me earlier. So, you know, the only use permit that is a vested right that I'm aware of is a conditional use permit, and that has a very specific purpose, right? It's an exception to zoning ordinances, and it's really specific to a particular property. This is actually an ordinance that is, zoning ordinance that is of general application. And so like all other ordinances that limit certain uses to certain areas and may have limitations on how those uses can be operated, this is really not, I don't believe that this is going to be any kind of a taking of property. And again, you know, the taking of property is a problem when it's without due process of law. So, you know, there's all kinds of procedures that we can look at. But just so you know, you know, there is a concept of, and I'm sure you know this, there's a concept of amortization of uses, right? So sometimes zoning codes changes and uses that were permitted for a long time are no longer permitted, and those can be amortized. And that's kind of what we were thinking about also when we were looking at the three-year period. And I believe that was probably what the committee was thinking about as well. So, you know, that's something that we can certainly look more into, but it's not, it's not a big concern at this point.
Okay. And then the second thought of it, this is probably more difficult to answer, but several of the speakers explicitly were threatening the course of use of a lawsuit, not based on substance, but rather based on the expense and the inconvenience of that sort of a lawsuit, which is, of course, unethical for an attorney to take and illegal basis for a lawsuit. But given the city's really tough financial straits now, is there any prospect for a city who should be sued in the future to actually successfully seek reasonable attorney fees from the plaintiff if the plaintiff loses?
You know, under certain circumstances, yes. But if it's merely a challenge to a discretionary decision or a legislative decision, you know, the best we can really do is try to knock the lawsuit out early. You know, it's very hard to say at this point because we don't quite know what the lawsuit is. But it is quite common for these types of lawsuits to happen. And, you know, I'm sure you've seen with this particular development, sometimes there are sequel lawsuits. So if there is a lawsuit at some point, the city has options as to how to deal with it. But, you know, it's a very broad question that, like you said, it's kind of difficult to answer without a specific claim against the city.
Okay, but there would certainly be no great need to cave in simply with a sort of lawsuit. Great, thank you.
Okay, let me ask a quick question for you, Elena, while you're there. It was brought up that some of these properties were bought with a 1031 exchange due to their use in the CUP that was a conditional use permit that was probably applied to these properties. How would the city be liable or is this, if they lose in the lottery and that use is no longer applicable to that property, and so therefore their 1031 exchange would have changed? And they would have tax liabilities? Where is the city's liability in that?
You know, it's not a question I can answer off the top of my head. I suspect that there is not city liability, but I don't actually know that. And so I can certainly find out. But, you know, as a matter of course, cities change their zoning codes, and these types of things happen all the time. I'm not familiar with cities having liability for this kind of potential loss of investment. You know, I'm not even sure if there would be any kind of tax liability for them. To be honest with you, I don't even know. But, you know, I'd be happy to look into that.
Okay. Okay, Michael or Susan, do you have questions?
I had a couple. One thing I'm wondering with this 1031 exchange, just because it can't be a vacation rental, it could still be a full-time rental, which means it's still an investment property for them, just at a different rate. But one of the questions I had when we were discussing, we actually had a TOT report from earlier in the year, and I counted up about 90 underperforming vacation rentals on the permit list that would be underperforming according to this $500 TOT collection. And then in the commercial zone, I believe there were about six that were underperforming. So collecting zero up to just under $500 worth of TOT. So I wondered if we had any more recent numbers on that? That would be a question, I guess, for one of the Scots.
We don't have more current information than what was provided to the community committee back in, I would think that was probably February or March. You know, obviously, TOT is in a bit of flux now with COVID-19. Some are doing better than others, some are not performing at all just because they choose not to rent. So, you know, that may skew the numbers if we were to run those right now. But I think your point about, you know, 90 or so, like, that's not atypical. I currently simply have to pay some TOT to continue use. The proposed ordinance has a much higher threshold of $500 in TOT. So it's certainly more than just somebody paying, taking 50 bucks out of their pocket and saying, well, you know, I had somebody rent once. This creates a higher threshold so that people aren't holding on to vacation rental permits for transferability or so other neighbors can't have one or for whatever purpose. Or just discovering that they thought they were going to use it and never, and just didn't get it together to do that.
Okay, and did we ever get a number on how many hosted home stay versus the whole home rentals we had who were permitted?
That would be a Scott Graham question, but I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have numbers in the number of hosted. We have to go through, you know, we have to go through and look at every single vacation rental license that's been issued. Come up with that.
And then the ADU restrictions, we had, if, you know, depending on how we go with this grandfathering in and whether it's going to be three years or two years or four years or whatever, is it legal to grandfather them in if the state is saying you can't use them as vacation rentals?
Our ordinance rolls them out after three years.
Okay, so then the state is okay with doing that since they already...
The state doesn't want you to have them as vacation rentals anyway. So any new ones that came in, that came in as an ADU to try to get a permit, once the ordinance became effective, wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to license them. It's on how it's written in my understanding of state law, anyway.
Okay, okay. One of the, I think it was actually Rick Dashler, asked about people holding more than one vacation rental in the community. So not a management company, but an individual who maybe owns several properties or more and has them all listed as vacation rentals. Do we have that? Do we know whether that's an issue?
I do believe we have some folks that have more than one vacation rental in town.
Let's see. Do we have, do we have any list of the number of campground spaces, RV spaces, and any lower ADR hotel rooms so that when we do go before Planning Commission, we can say, these are the lower-income options that we're providing for visitors to Morro Bay?
We don't possess such a list. We'd have to create it.
We would be able to create that for, I think you meant the Coastal Commission? Is that where you were?
That's where I'm going.
Yeah, and I think we'd probably more than most, you know, have a lot of affordable, I would say, affordable accommodations.
Exactly, that's what I was thinking. Okay. And then Betty, well, that was another question. Betty Winholz on affordable housing, but we can get into that later. Okay, that's it for me.
Michael, did you have questions at this time?
Yeah, the first ones for Scott Collins, I guess. Do we have a threshold for how much, either in personnel or cost compliance officers would take? Are we talking like 250,000 times one and a half? We need 300,000 to pay off this type of obligation? Do we need something more than that? Do we have kind of a gravitas of how to pull this off with enforcement in terms of the scale of the fees and things like that?
There's a bit of work that needs to be done, Michael, to get that number down. You know, the committee talked about maybe $500 for, you know, an annual license would cover the existing costs, which is host compliance. would cover the existing costs, which is host compliance, inspections and just the general administration. But there isn't anything in there that covers the, the backend of, of a city code enforcement. We, we want to make sure we have a number that is reasonable. We don't want to make a profit off of this, right? So that, that's sort of the work that Scott may have, still have to do. But my, my general feeling is that one part-time code enforcement officer for the entire city is not going to be sufficient to sort of address these issues.
Yeah. As I say, it's, it's just hard to, to look at recommendations about what fees and things should be if we don't have a sense of what the gravitas is for pulling off the enforcement, which, which we know has been almost non-existent at this point. If it's, if it's only by complaint to numbers that people don't know about or to, to jurisdiction elements that don't have capacity to go do it, there isn't any. So I, I, I'm just very concerned about that for us making recommendations about those types of things at this point. And then I guess the second point's much more theoretical to, to maybe, uh, to Scott Graham. You know, if we've got some of these larger homes, let's say we have a, a, a five-bedroom home and you're allowed two persons per room and then plus two more. Now I've got 12 people and then we're not counting children below three. So five, four couples getting together with a set of grandparents and they've, they've all got children. I have, I have 16, 20 entities. When, when does a single family home stop being a single family home due to the scale of, of intensity of use of some of these, these places that are there? I mean, even if you can accommodate six cars in a driveway, those six cars there all the time, it seems like it's more like a multifamily house you're next to rather than a single family house. That's more, maybe that's rhetorical question.
I mean, thankfully, I would say that thankfully we don't have very many of those, those situations. But I understand where you're going with it. I mean, like that, that potentially could be an issue. And so maybe, you know, the commission wants to talk about, you know, an ultimate, we have the numbers by bedroom, right? Plus two, you know, two per bedroom plus two with the children exemption front or three. To have some maximum cap, you could certainly come up with something like that if that was the desire of the commission to make that recommendation to council.
And then this was something I didn't see in the, in the staff report, but a number of people were, were talking about. Can you, can you make a definitive statement about what you know about what our, what our neighbors are doing? Like Mr. Deschler was saying, Cayucus and Cambria, I think what he's trying to say between the, the difficulties with technology was that they had 100-foot perimeters and they were looking to expand those because of dissatisfaction? I believe that's what he was trying to say, but I, I didn't look at that myself. And then?
That was my takeaway as well.
And then you, you mentioned something about, was it 900 feet in, 500 feet for Los Santos? Is that what they, what they co-asked on? At some point I thought you said 900 feet, but?
That's not what we said. We, a couple, one commenter said 900, one commenter said 500. I don't, I don't know what their buffer is. Uh, but the county ordinance that I pulled up specifies Cambria, Cayucus and Avala because that's where they've had most of the issues. I'm not aware, I can talk to the, the county administrator, I'm not aware, um, but I haven't talked to him, but if they are considering changing those, those buffers or not. I, I haven't heard that, but that doesn't mean that's not being considered.
And, and I guess it's by ignorance, but the, this, this one's probably for Scott Graham, uh, or could be for another Scott. It specifically says that, that boats in the harbor were not considered. Is that because there's oversubscription to those or we don't have capacity to have services for people living on the boats? Or what was the rationale for not including harbor setting?
Susan, do you remember?
I, I do think we went to, um, um, the harbor master and talked with him about what was appropriate. And I, as I recall, he did not feel that that would be a manageable use of those leaseholds there.
That sounds, that sounds right. Uh, I'm going to go with that. Right.
It's just a question. When you're looking for, for options for people to stay, that, that's one of the ones that's obvious to me and I've considered in places that I've gone. And I know Commissioner Lourdes gotten a, a boat before when he's traveled. So, uh, but that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay. I, um, I have and I, I can see some of the problems in the harbor with pump-out solutions and, and kind of more like more safety situations. So, um, I'm not sure. I think that would be an interesting, but I think that we, that would need to be a special topic with special conditions placed. I've got a question for, for Scott Graham on this. One of the biggest problems we have is, is parking. And that's been brought up, number of cars, number of vehicles, uh, parking off, off street. One of the other problems we have in town are people even illegally without encroachment permits, taking out driveways and basically taking their whole frontage and turning them into parking lots. Do we have any, um, I didn't see any conditions in here requiring that, that driveways would conform to our, um, um, design guidelines or in parking, parking areas would, should have been legally constructed with encroachment permits and all the appropriate, uh, permits? Do we have any consideration on that in this, in this?
So individual properties that, that do things without permits are always subject to review by the city. In fact, it comes up on a, I, I mean, it's a weekly thing that happens. People come in and I, they want to do, somebody new came into town, bought a house and they want to do remodel and we take a look at the house and it's got, it's got, it's got improvements that are there that were never run through the city. So that's not uncommon. This process, like any other process the city runs through, can look at those types of things. And when we find them over time, we have people correct them or get, or get the pertinent permits for them. Some of it kind of depends on where, whether like in the instance you raised related to a driveway, is, you know, whether that's something, is that driveway on, on private property or is that driveway in the unapproved right of way? Because we have really wide streets in some areas in town and, you know, you got 10, 15 feet of unapproved right of way out there and, and, and public works will issue encroachment permits to allow some of those areas to be paved versus having them be dirt and that type of thing. So, um, it certainly depends on the individual scenario as to, as to what will be required. But, um, we do look into those things when we're permitting thing, when we're permitting vacation rentals or anything else.
I think this needs to be a key point to, to investigate, um, when the permits are issued because just driving around this last week, I've seen three driveways that were done, that I know were done illegally and they've basically taken the full width of the property and turned them into, you know, turned it into concrete across the full width. And I don't think that's what we, we don't want to, I don't think we want to encourage front yards to be turned into fully paved parking lots.
Yeah. I mean, part of the issue, and I think you're aware of this, is the current code doesn't really address landscape requirements, um, in, uh, the city. So what we have to rely on when we're dealing with that is sort of the, um, the less concrete design guidelines, um, you know, that, that they talk about, that do have some reference to landscaping in them. Usually that comes up when we're processing applications. In fact, we had our development review meeting today and that was an issue that was raised at that meeting, uh, in relation to an application that we have in-house.
Okay. And is it, um, I also didn't see anything of number or restriction of the maximum number of vehicles that can be allowed for each vacation rental. Seeing as we have number of bedrooms and number of people in bedrooms, couldn't we restrict the maximum vehicles that would be allowed for each, for each rental?
Certainly the planning commission proposed those types of restrictions. Part of what you'd be doing, part of, you know, what the conversation should be, there's issues that you see that aren't addressed by the ordinance, you should raise them and see if you can get, you can gain concurrence among the commission and make those recommendations to city council.
Okay. So, uh, let's, let's go with that as I've got the microphone. Let's see if we've got concurrence on that, that issue. And I'm not saying how many, but I think that should be considered. Jesse, are you yea or nay?
What was the specific question again? I mean, I was listening, but?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, no, just having a, a maximum number of vehicles per each vacation rental that are allowed.
It's tough. I mean, if it's five bedrooms or it's one, I mean, it's, 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 you know, putting a, putting a cap on a, putting a cap on, it's going to be difficult.
We can tie it to the number of bedrooms at least.
That, that would be a start, I think. Uh, you know, as with any of these, all of these issues that get brought up, the devil's going to be in the details, so.
Right.
I don't know. Is that a suitable answer?
Should that be investigated or?
I, I, I think we should, we should, yeah, look at it. But again, the variability of, of the size of the, of the rental, the size of the number of bedrooms, um, sure, it's something we can look at. I mean, I, I'm, I don't know how we, we would quantify the requirement, but yeah, we should look at it.
Okay. So we got a possible, Joseph?
Well, you know, I, I had a note on, on mine to mention that I thought that any permit granting would require that you physically examine the property to make sure that you could physically accommodate the, the cars that you expect there. I have a note here that says one car per bedroom. But, I mean, I don't have any, I don't have any real fault if the property can physically accommodate in the driveway or the garage or elsewhere five cars, but I just don't want them on the street. So I'm not sure if it's, I'm not sure it's really a problem if we say that the property has to accommodate all parking on site.
The fact that the ordinance took, I don't, I don't know if the, um, vacation rental committee had more specific conversations, um, about that. Scott, do you, uh, can you shed any light on the conversation related to parking from the committee?
Yeah, I think, uh, they didn't want a hillbilly, um, parking lot situation where, you know, there's cars scattered. It was not an aesthetic that the group felt good about. They also didn't want them scatter shot in front of other homes where people are feeling, you know, that's where they, they get aggravated. I live next to two SDRs and when that happens, I, it gets my blood boiling, so I, I know how people feel. So the, the group was saying, so long as it's accommodated onsite, great, and so long as those are like conforming parking spaces, not scattered across the lawn and that, than that approach. So that, that was as far as they got. I don't think, there may have been a brief discussion about cap on total number of vehicles, but there's more concern about just taking them off the street.
Okay. Susan, do you have any other recollection, recollections on that?
Yeah, I think some of the, um, vacation rental property managers actually do limit things like that. We definitely wanted the vehicles off the street, that, that they had to be parked in a driveway, in a garage, not on lawns. And, and we'd also talked about each permit having an initial inspection. So you could at that time inspect, do they have an adequate number of parking spaces? At that point you could say, you can park three cars here, period. That's it. That's all you get. They would also be looking at number of bedrooms, um, access, egress areas, um, proper signage, all of those kinds of things. So I think it could be part of that initial inspection. I think we talked about repeating those inspections maybe every four years. So I, I don't know that I feel like we have to, I mean, it wouldn't hurt my feelings to limit the number of cars, but it's sort of self-limiting by how many can actually be fit in the driveway or in the garage on site.
Okay. Michael, can you comment on that?
Yeah, I, I, I have, uh, I have one of the larger ones next to me and, and my biggest concern is the number of cars. Because if you look at the number of bedrooms and then you add another two on top of that, it's not the number of bedrooms that should be dictating the parking. It should be the number of adults that are being, that are renting the, the house. So I, I would, I would tie it more to the capacity of the house rather than the number of bedrooms, because I think you're adding a car all the time to the bedroom count when, when you don't do that. And, and, you know, I, I, I think in, in some of these, uh, parts of town where you might have, you know, a, a four or five-bedroom house on a, on a smaller lot than, than I have in, in my neighborhood, this could potentially cause significant issues because it, if you don't use the car parking as the limitation, then you will always be exceeding the capacity of the site, um, to satisfy the, the visitors. So I, I think it's important to tie those two things together, tie the parking to the number of adults and tie the, the number of adults to how many cars you can park on the site relative to our guidelines. It's kind of in tandem.
Okay. So I think we kind of have a consensus that there may be a problem, but we don't know how to, how to deal with it and it needs to be investigated further. Another issue that came up from public comment was Megan's Law Review. So do we have any mechanism to review that on the guests? Or do we have, also do we have any mechanism, uh, to be able to weed out problem renters through cross-platforms or through cross-rentals? Say that there's, that we have a specific problem with certain, certain customers and they can just go to another site or go to another vacation rental and cause the same problem over and over again? Do we have any way of dealing with that or penalizing them specifically?
Good question. I know that, uh, the Airbnb and probably a lot of the other hosting sites, you know, do rate, um, guests as well as hosts and, um, that goes in both directions. So if a guest is a horrific guest, um, they get no stars and they can be blacklisted from those sites. And I don't know how the site, if the sites share that across, but, uh, the expectation that the city would somehow manage all that is not realistic. Furthermore, I don't know if we put the same restrictions on hotels for that matter, um, how we would effectively do that. The hotels may, may engage in that with, with the police, so, you know, that's something I can look into. But, um, to say that we're going to monitor everybody who comes into town, whether they stay at a vacation rental or a long-term rental or, or homeowner, um, you know, I, I think that's a slippery slope. But I, I'll leave that up to Lena to respond if, if there's some legal mechanism for us to do that.
So, um, my understanding is that, uh, the movement of, uh, sex offenders and felons and people who have been through the, the legal system really is regulated by state law. And we are pretty much preempted from doing almost anything as far as I know. I can certainly look into it more, but, um, I understand that with, in, um, per Megan's Law, sex offenders are supposed to, uh, not just register their residence, but it, there's, it's possible that they also have to provide temporary addresses. I, I don't know that, so I can certainly look into that. But as far as, as regulating or excluding people from the city, I very much doubt that we have any power over that. But again, I can look into it.
Do we have any mechanism, you know, in relation to that? Do we have any mechanism to, to find people that have, um, that have committed violations, you know, in the city to be able to identify, um, guests that would then, you know, have created noise complaints or parking complaints? Do we have any, any mechanism in this for be able to find them or to recognize them, you know, in these permitting processes?
Well, the only thing that we have right now is, uh, we have some pretty robust suspension and, uh, and revocation procedures, but those are to the permit holders. So if they, um, repeatedly have guests that are disruptive and noisy and cause problems, they would get their permit revoked. There's nothing in the ordinance that would regulate the guests at this point. I'm not quite sure how we would do that, but, you know, there's nothing in there right now.
Okay. I see that, that's a real problem and I could also see the, the owners and the operators being victimized by, by quote unquote, bad guests and having their permit revoked because, you know, of condition that they rented to, you know, Felicia's, um, you know, renters or guests and stuff. So I'm just looking for, is there any way that we can separate out the liability or the responsibility to the guests and protect some of the owners from losing their livelihood because they made a mistake once?
One of the things that, we, we talked about this a lot in the committee meetings, um, especially the folks who are doing the home stay, but also the vacation rental managers actually do screen the people who are signing up, um, often turning them down. They look at the review. They look at the reviews that are left on these different platforms and decide, you know, I really don't want a frat party in my, you know, home rental. They responded pretty quickly to any complaints that, you know, were in process that they could hear, and there were people they didn't rent to. So I think there's a lot of self-regulating, because as you say, they don't want to lose that permit. That's, you know, if they're managing for someone else, that's their livelihood and that of their client, and if it's their own home, that's somebody who's, as one of the people said, on the other side of the drywall from them. But it sounded like, especially the home stay people, but I would say even the managed home rentals, do a pretty good screening job. It does make me wonder, so one of the things we had talked about was having this centralized hotline, one number, anybody can call, get that information to somebody, I had a complaint with this rental next door to me or across the street from me. So you can actually keep a real list of that, and then also a number to call to the manager or owner to come deal with things right away. I think that will help if we can get that system set up, that there is one sort of centralized clearinghouse for these kinds of complaint calls, and then to find out which ones are actually licensed and which ones are, you know, the bad apples that don't even have a permit.
And build off, sorry, I would just say, there's due process built into the ordinance, so just because a complaint is filed doesn't mean there's an automatic fine or revocation or suspension. We have to move through our code enforcement process, which means gathering of evidence and consideration of factors, which could be, you know, we just made a mistake in renting to this individual who was terrific, and we responded with one hour, they were non-responsive, we had to call the police, they still were non-responsive. Those, all those things are weighed into the decision, and it's made by a human being, it's not a, you know, it's made by discussion and consideration of evidence. So that gives, should give a homeowner who just simply made a mistake the opportunity to make up for it. But if there was no effort to address the issue and it was a very bad incident, you know, that could lead to revocation or suspension. So we factor in all those things in that discussion.
Okay, good. You need this mechanism to be fair to all parties, and so as long as there's, you know, due process, I think that would be helpful, to get acceptance by the community, by all parties. One of the things Betty Winholtz brought up is that, was the definition of affordable housing, so this would be for Scott Graham. Seeing as this is in the municipal code and the zoning, would that, with the definition that applies in the rest of the code, follow through on the definition for this?
Yeah, we have definitions of affordable housing in the city's housing elements, the breakdowns for what the affordability indices are. I think maybe Betty was sort of a little bit mixing apples and oranges. You know, I think what we're talking about in these instances is, you know, deed restricted affordable housing units cannot be used for this, or projects that were approved that way. Any project that we have that's going to be an affordable housing project would be a deed restricted type situation. So I think you're looking at those types of things.
Yeah, and that's the way I understood the right of the ordinance to be, and I think that's the appropriate view of it. So let's see, what else do we have that came up? Okay, we talked about the class action.
Transfer permits.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Jesse?
Well, I know transferability of permits was a topic that came up a lot.
Yes, and then the, yeah. So is there, is there any vested or legal interest of, I wouldn't know what the legal term is, that says if you have a permit, that you have a right to have that permit?
No, right, this is, there's a distinction between vested rights and you just have a permit and you're able to use your property as long as you're in compliance with the permit. Conditional use permits are vested right, they run with the land, but, you know, other than those and variances, those are not, this is not a vested right. So it's not that once they have it, it runs with the land. It's very specifically designed for a particular applicant and a particular property.
I had a question in there, if I may, Jerry. So not to say that this would happen, but just, you know, I'm kind of a pessimist, so I kind of look at the worst-case scenario and things that could happen, or, you know, ways that the system could be gained. Could it be possible for an owner to have this permit, you know, decide that they're going to sublet the permit or lease the permit to somebody else? Is that, is that a thing? Am I just kind of thinking about this too much, or?
Well, generally speaking, non-transferable means you can't sublet it either. If the commission believes it's necessary, we can certainly clarify that, but non-transferable means non-transferable. You can't sublet it, you can't pass it on, you can't gift it, you can't lend it, nothing. That's it. It's for you and you alone.
I think that's clear enough. You know, one of the comments also was that a, you know, a neighbor filed complaints and never heard anything back from it. Do we have a process in this permitting process that anybody who files a complaint would be notified of how that complaint was being handled or how that was addressed at the conclusion of that complaint?
Well, we don't.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, we don't have anything in the ordinance, generally speaking. I'm not sure if this is how you do it in your city, but most of the time, complaint, people who file complaints, code enforcement complaints, are not notified of what happens. However, code enforcement files are subject to public records act request, so that information is available. But, you know, Scott, maybe you have something else that you'd like to add about that?
Yeah, I mean, we do typically respond to folks when we receive the complaints, you know, at least to let them know that we're looking into it. We don't have the capacity right now, based on the number of complaints that we've, you know, we receive, especially as it relates to COVID and the reduction in code enforcement staff by one person. We only have one person that's here three days a week to, you know, spend a lot of time reaching back out to folks. We do, we do look into every complaint that we receive, we do investigate it and make a determination on whether there is an actual issue that's been raised or not, and then whether to turn it into a code enforcement case. A lot of times, you know, the complaints that are received don't rise to the level of violation of the city's municipal code.
Scott, I think it might even be, you know, if nothing else, to have an automatic reply that a complaint was received and is being acted on, you know, and then I think it's kind of common courtesy.
We do have that actually on the city's website with requests.
You know, and then if possible, when we have this, this code enforcement mechanism and have it funded, I think that would go a long way to making the community feel like they've been heard, and whether their complaint was valid or not, at least they would be notified even by a postcard or something, or an email or something. It just, if there's any way possible that we could do that as part of the administration process of code enforcement, I think that would be helpful.
We have the ability right now with the current software applications that we utilize for this process.
Okay, that would, I think that would be great.
I have one more question about the transferability issue. This is for Elena. Is it possible that a corporation or a trust could own any of these properties and by that have a kind of continuity of ownership that crosses generations? That would be a kind of a...
Yeah, I suppose it would be possible, yeah.
But isn't, doesn't the permitting process require a person to be designated as the prime recipient? So would a trust qualify as such?
Well, the way that the permit provisions are written right now, the property owner has to apply for the permit. So in the case of a trust, the individual would be a trustee, but the property owner would be the trust, so they would be the permit holder. If you wanted to make it that it was specific to a trustee or an individual, we can certainly look into that. I think that's, that should be possible. But, you know, when a trust owns a property, they own a property.
Yeah, a lot of times do that for secession or for tax purposes.
Owning the property doesn't mean they own the permit, right?
Well, that's what we're saying, that they could at this point.
It does seem like a loophole.
Yeah, I mean, you know, what's the likelihood of having so many trusts that they maintain their permit for generation upon generation? You know, I don't know. If you think that that's, that's potentially an issue, we certainly can look into that.
It only takes one.
Well, if that's, if that's preventing, you know, several houses from not being able to get a permit due to the buffer, and, you know, say they tie up a permit for 40 years, I mean, that's, that doesn't, that doesn't seem unreasonable.
Right.
Jerry?
Okay, Joseph?
Well, do you want to entertain at this time, you know, whether we should put a limit on the number of years for which the permit is good? There's, I mean, there was some discussion in the report from the committee that that could be a possibility as well, whether it be three years or five years.
That could be a discussion, that should be a discussion. Let's finish this trust issue. Joseph, how would you feel? What's your point of view? Should this be tied to an individual person or should this be tied to a trust?
I would rather see a definitive time limit placed on it rather than whether corporation, trust, or an individual.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, a permit could be, one person could have a permit for 40 years. You know, if they buy their house when they're 20 or 30, where they just inherit it and turn it into an SDR and get their permit, and they keep it through their lifetime, they could potentially have it just as long, so.
But is that, is that a problem that it's being operated effectively? They have no complaints and they're, and then all the neighbors are happy with what they're doing? So is that, is that essentially a problem? You know, that may not be, we may be looking at something, we may be creating a problem that we, you know, where there isn't any problem there.
For me, it's not necessarily that it's a problem, it's just a fairness issue. So I mean, you're not only, I mean, yeah, it's great, you have, you have a vacation rental and you're able to, you know, give the city the TOT tax, but your neighbors are within that buffer zone, are sufficiently prevented from also reaping those same benefits. So I think sunsetting at some point has to be, has to be addressed.
Okay, so we have one, so Jesse, you're for sunsetting, you're for a time limit. Where does the rest of the commission stand on a time limit?
I would, I'd want to entertain a time limit, and I would not want to get involved in the legal complexities of trying to exclude, again, corporation, trusts, limited partnerships, any of that business. It's, that would be a quid pro quo, I think.
Okay, Susan, where would you stand on time limit or sunset clause?
Well, that's...
Where do you stand on a sunset clause or a time limit on permits?
I don't know. I like the idea in theory. In practice, boy, I can just hear a bunch of people going through their roofs right now. I know. It does, there is a fairness thing of people, again, as you say, 40 years, they're living next to a vacation rental, and that's something they wanted to be able to do. But again, if one is operating properly and there are no complaints and they're contributing to TOT, I certainly don't, so the portability of the permit, I absolutely think is an issue that we had pretty good agreement on. I wouldn't want to see it going with a corporation or a trust just because it's a corporation or a trust. But, boy, I don't know. Sunsetting, if you were going to do it, I guess it would have to be a pretty long time limit, maybe 10 years.
See, I kind of see it the other way. So, I mean, so say some of these folks in the beach track that are going to lose their permits, some people in the beach track are going to lose permits. I mean, that's kind of the point of this. You know, so say you're one of those folks and you have, you know, you've relied on this income, and your neighbor is the recipient of that lottery, as long as they own that house, as long as they own that permit, you're just prohibited from doing so. I mean, that just seems inherently unfair. I mean, I would say three to five years to me sounds like, okay, well, let's readdress this in three to five years.
And that gives another person a chance.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, that's just my fairness point of view.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, I tend to agree with the, you know, I don't care about somebody who's doing it well. Part of the argument is, I do think there's a negative impact on values around these projects. You know, one of the things I'll be talking about is requiring a disclosure in the real estate transactions, that people have to disclose how many of these are within X number of feet of the home that's being looked at, so that people know that they're getting into a neighborhood impacted by these things if they choose to buy. And I think the idea that you've got a problem neighbor in perpetuity that may be dragging down your home sale because people don't want to buy next to a vacation rental is a real significant thing, in addition to the people who have one that's successfully operating, wanting to continue that revenue stream in perpetuity. So I'm kind of open on listening to the sunset limit argument, but only relative to other issues about impact.
Okay. Well, I don't think, I personally don't think that we should sunset somebody if they have, if they're operating fairly and compliant. I think that's, that's an unfair burden given to somebody who's trying to be good while you're setting yourself up for another operator to get that permit that will not be as qualified or as compliant as the people that are, that are using it then. I think the complaint process and the, actually, the sheer problem of doing this is going to create enough turnover that, you know, long-term, I don't think it's going to be an issue. I think there's going to be turnover in these, in these properties. But that's just, that's my opinion, it looks like we need to, we need to come back to this and get a definitive recommendation to the city council where we say. I've kind of gone through the public comment, issues that came up. Of course, there's the cap, and we'll need to talk about that, and, you know, the density, and is there any way to have a minimum, you know, maybe, you know, we have our three lot plus in these smaller neighborhoods, we maybe have a minimum linear distance or something that we could incorporate into these three lots, so every fourth house, you know, in the islands down there is not a, you know, is not a vacation rental or is not a short-term rental. So maybe we can incorporate a combination of the lot, a number of lots, but also maybe a small, a linear measurement along the street line that would exclude those smaller lot neighborhoods from having such a high density, because typically they're going to have smaller streets, they're going to have smaller, more parking problems there. So what is, before we get into going through the actual ordinance, maybe we should take a five-minute recess here to stretch our legs. Is everybody agreeing on that?
Sounds good.
Okay, so let's, I saw Michael show up, so it's about 8:30. Let's reconvene about, but five minutes, 8:35. We'll come back and check the, check our monitors here. Okay, thank you. Okay, okay, thank you. We are, I am here. Okay, let's see.
Who's everybody? They all just decided it was done.
Okay, yeah, yeah, time to go home. Take your marbles.
We are home.
Okay, um, just a epithologically thing, um, when I'm speaking, I'm no longer coming up on my screen. Is.
We see you. I see you on my screen perfectly.
Okay, well, that's esoterically, I just don't exist to myself, I guess. Okay, um, let's see, do we have everybody back?
Looks like it. By the way, Betty Winholt sent an email that Los Osos is doing a five hundred square foot buffer or a five hundred foot buffer.
Five hundred foot buffer, okay. Okay, uh, Scott, maybe you can help us with this, Scott Graham? Um, should we go line by line through the, the ordinance? And let's see how far we get tonight on this, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's worthwhile going through sections to see, I mean, I think like you've normally done, I mean, you've been doing a lot of this recently, so. I think, you know, starting in the beginning and saying, hey, does everybody, what does everybody think about this section and move on to the next one? Just do it methodically. It's kind of how you guys have been, you know, looking at things more recently, so.
It seemed to, it's, it seemed to work, so let's go ahead and we'll try that.
Okay.
Okay, so. So we're in Exhibit A, and so draft ordinance number blank, blank, blank. So that through, through section one, uh, basically it gives uh, down through section two. Does anybody have any problem with the wording down to section two? So bottom of the second page.
Yeah, Jerry, on, on the first page, uh, the one thing I would say is that the whereas, um, the next to last whereas says, do not threaten residential character of the neighborhoods. And, and that to me sounds more like a visual thing. And, and, uh, even though it says public health, safety, or general wealth, welfare, which, which is, which is a more general comment, there's something about the, threaten the residential quality of the neighborhoods would strike me as, as something more, eh, more important to put there or, or qualities and charac- residential qualities and character of the neighborhood because, uh, this is not a, a visual thing. Most of these places probably look fine. The problem is when the quality of living there changes due to the nature of occupation uh, being exceeded, which, which reduces the qualities of everybody around there, which all the writers, all the speakers, and certainly the people in the survey that responded in Part B of the staff report are talking about elements of qualities. They're not talking about character.
Okay, I, I, I agree with it. That's a good, that's a really good point. Um, do we have consensus from the, the other commissioners?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, and I can't see Joseph, so.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm in agreement.
Okay, so we'll change on that. I think that's a viable point, so then. So then we're down to, uh, the start of section two. I don't have anything on that. Does anybody have anything on section two or section three?
On, on the definitions part, I, I did have a question about when we do these inspections, are they basically saying that all occupiable bedrooms are gonna have this opening that can be used for emergency exit egress that's, that's dictated by the code for new, new projects? They're gonna have to retrofit that. You know, because I'm thinking there's a lot of, uh, garages, uh, that have been renovated and, and other spaces that it would be surprising to me if they were inspected, they would all meet that criteria.
Yes. They, they have to meet the criteria of having an exit, even if, I, I think you can have a window as long as it's large enough to get out of. But it, that's a safety code. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that, uh.
Was it into a bedroom?
There are specific sizes for egress windows. And if, if we're counting something as a bedroom, then they should have, uh, a viable egress to that. And I don't think that, I don't think we want to get people trapped in a in an area in a fire where they can't, where the fireperson can't get in or out.
And Jesse would probably know this too, but my, my understanding of the code, the intent is on a residence, you're assuming, um, experience with the structure, knowing the ins and outs of them, whereas somebody visiting or just there for a short duration doesn't even necessarily know where the operable windows are within the space.
Transcency does have an issue there, but I, I think, I, I, I think my, my, my concern there is legal nonconformance. Um, if you have a legal nonconforming bedroom with a legal nonconforming egress, asking you to, to conform to, to meet the, the intent of this permit, that, that may be a tough sell for some of these homeowners. I don't know. What do you think, Scott?
Yeah, I mean, it raises a couple of questions. You're, we have a lot of nonconforming, um, homes. We have a whole, older housing stock in town. I mean, you're all aware of this. Um, and so there'll be a lot of bedrooms that have windows in them, bedrooms that have windows in that you can get out of, but that don't meet current code requirements, um, for size of the opening. Um, so internally, you know, what we've looked at is, does it have a window you can get out of? Does it take you out of a place where you can get away, away from the house? Um, you know, and we've kind of taken a look at it like that because we know there are a lot of nonconforming situations out there. If they had a window that say you couldn't get out of, that would be one of the things we might call out and say, no, you can't, you're gonna have to fix that. If you want it to be more explicit, you should have that conversation. You can write it in here. There's gonna be a lot, I mean, about every se- I would say about three quarters of the licensed vacation rentals will have to make window changes in their bedrooms, though.
So the code did get a little relaxed, uh, for first floor. Uh, it used to be five point seven square feet for an egress window out of, out of a bedroom, but on, uh, on first floors where the grade's not more than, I want to say sixty inches from grade, uh, they can go down to five point oh. So it kind of went back to, you know, what we were doing in the seventies and the eighties. So I, I don't know that too many will be out of conformance, but I mean, I think we ought to really not, not impose commercial hotel standards because it's, it's a different, it's a different animal, so.
But imposing residential standards for fire egress may not be out of line here, though. Because we're, we're actually changing the use from, from a permanent usage to a transient usage and maybe the higher, the higher requirement or the higher, you know, the safer requirement, let's say, may be in, in order.
I think what we may be inadvertently doing here, so for example, a three oh five oh, uh, single hung window doesn't comply on a second story anymore where it used to. And, and it's, it's perfectly, I mean, I'm a big guy, I can get out of a three oh five oh single hung window, so. You know, I, I, I don't know. I, I, I think it, it's almost a judgment call on the inspector. And I think if you have a window that's, you know, say, a, a six oh four oh and it's, you know, six feet above grade and, you know, you have to be a, a mountain climber to get out of it in an emergency, you know, that's, that's a realistic, that's a realistic thing. I, I think we ought to leave thi- this up to the, the, uh, the, uh, the inspectors. I really think they have, they, they have the skill there to, uh, to make those judgment calls, I think.
Well, also the, the egress windows were designed to allow, you know, a fireperson with an air tank to get through the window.
They also have access.
Yeah, right, but that's, that was the, that was the basis of the, uh, minimum square footage and the minimum height requirement, you know, on the windows from my, from my understanding.
Right, I, I, I just think honestly, we have, we have a lot more, uh, pressing things in this ordinance. I wouldn't want to get hung up on an egress window and, and, you know, and, uh, I, I think the inspectors are more than capable of, um, making that decision in the field.
Okay, so we, we leave it in as, as, um, that window or opening that can be used for emergency egress. So we leave the wording as, as it sits. Do I have a concurrence on that?
Yes.
That would be my preference.
Okay, I see. No, head nods and.
Uh, Scott, we are gonna have building inspectors doing these inspections, right?
We're gonna have building inspectors doing the inspections and we're gonna have, um, uh, fire doing the inspections as well because they're transient uses and they're required by law now to do those inspections as well. So we're gonna have both.
Perfectly qualified.
Okay, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, yeah. Okay, so we're, uh, on page three. Anything on page four?
I'm sorry, yeah, page three, dwellings. I'm gonna get caught up here on the, uh, the definition of dwelling, uh, if I can, Jerry.
Sure.
So Scott, ADUs, junior ADUs, uh, obviously anything that's permitted, you know, going forward would be prohibited. But where did we land on ADUs, junior, well, junior ADUs wouldn't be part of it because they were after the, during the year, but where, where would ADUs be? Um, where do they, how do they fall into this?
So ADUs as the ordinance is written now, um, if we have ones that are, that are permitted, we have some, you know, I don't know, I don't know the number, we have to go do the research, but. As the ordinance is written now, we have a compliance, um, ADU that's being utilized as a vacation rental, it would basically term out after the three-year period.
And they are considered dwellings for the purpose of this? And junior ADUs would not, right?
That's a good question.
They, we can't call codes on them, so I mean, I would think that junior ADUs, uh, because it says in, in the junior ADU ordinance, you can't call them dwellings basically for any, any other reason than to, for, uh, the rate accounts, so.
Yeah, and those aren't, those aren't actually, you know, picked up in the current definition that we have even in the, um, in the zoning code because the zoning code's old. It'll, the new zoning code will have the definitions of, um, junior ADUs, but it won't, um, the current code does not.
I'm wondering if we ought to just differentiate in this, in this document.
Well, the document does speak to ADUs and junior ADUs.
No, this, this document specifically. The, the draft ordinance.
Yeah, junior, juniors described in the ordinance, though, I think, right?
It does on page four, Jesse.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Junior accessory dwelling unit shall have the same meaning as the term is defined in section six, five, eight, five, two, point two, two of the government code.
There you go.
Which is sufficiently vague.
It's one of those gauzy terms.
Well, so junior ADUs in, in the statute reads, you can call it a dwelling for this, but you can't call it a dwelling for that. And, you know, it gets really, it gets really gray, which is why I'm bringing it up. So anyway, I don't know if we wanna, you know.
Things we were looking at in terms of dwellings is that we didn't want people to use school buses, treehouses, sheds, you know, things that wouldn't normally be considered habitable under codes, so.
Okay, anyway, I don't want to get caught up, I just wanted.
Okay, so, so we're gonna move on, Jesse, we're gonna, so on to page five, so.
Jerry, can I bring up a question?
Jerry.
Just to, just to be clear, so we want to say that one of these existing ADUs, which is currently, uh, permitted as a short-term vacation rental and is an attached ADU, so for all effective purposes, it's hosted. But to be clear, we'd want to say that's going to go the way of three years and done. Is that correct?
That's the way I read it.
Yeah, I'm not in disagreement, but I just, I would, I, I don't want somebody coming saying, oh, by the way, you couldn't possibly be me because I'm in my house every day of the year and, and, you know, it's another bedroom except there's a separate entrance, that sort of thing. Okay.
Not, not to be negative, but is there, there's not a way that the primary and the ADU could both be vacation rentals, right?
Not the way the ordinance is written.
No, we said you could only have one on a recording.
Okay, so we're on page five, short-term, you know, in general. I have a, kind of a question or just an overall thought is, um, because the, because the impacts are higher in the residential zones, would the T O T tax, the T, T O T, which is a tax, be higher than the T O T for uh, commercial zones and for, um, hotels? Or is it the same or is it higher or for, for the short-term vacation rental?
It's the same.
They're the same. Should it be the same? We have more impacts on the neighborhood on a short-term rental than we do in a commercial zone where we have a, um, where we have a multiple hotel rooms and they were zoned for them. We're gonna have more impacts through the city and costs for code compliance and complaint resolution and all of that than you, we do dealing with a single hotel room.
T O T is a general tax. Um, the fee associated with a vacation rental would cover the cost of enforcement, at least for the code enforcement officer themselves. Um, it's hard to decipher if a tourist visiting in a vacation rental or in a hotel has more of an overall impact on the overall community. One can argue they certainly have more of an impact on the resident, residential area where they're housed, but it's hard to argue and make an argument that's concrete enough to justify going out to the tax, tax to the voters and asking for a higher rate over one, one use over the other. It would be a hard argument. I've never heard of that, uh, being instituted, but I, I could be wrong. Maybe Elena has, has more she can offer on that.
Okay, Elena, do you have any other information on that?
I'm sorry, could you say that last part? I kind of lost the signal a little bit.
Okay, um. Does, are other communities or do other communities have a, have a differential rate between hotel rooms, say hotel rooms and residential, uh, the short-term vacation rentals and residential?
Not, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
But I haven't specifically researched that issue.
Do you think that there's more impact to the city financially from short-term rentals than there is from a single hotel room?
Wouldn't be able to answer that question.
Yeah.
It's hard, hard to know. I mean, the police, police gets a lot of calls for service, um, that's related to visitation. It's hard to decipher, are those calls for daytrippers or for overnight visits and what type of use? We don't ask those kind of questions, um, when, uh, you know, confronting a, a suspect of it or a potential violator of, of municipal code. So it'd be hard to, to answer that, do an analysis.
It'd be hard to justify it then.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That was more of the, I guess that was a philosophical question to see if we needed to differentiate.
No, Barry, I, I think one of the protections would be if we established this system of recording and registering complaints, then, you know, the vacation rental owner who's not complying with those good neighbor policies is gonna lose their license. Whereas in a hotel, they're pretty much.
Well, they're zoned for it, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so maybe this may or may not be the time to bring it up, uh, but I'm gonna, anyway. Do we have, um, any way to capture the informal markets of secondary homes being rented out informally to, to friends and friends of friends and friends of friends and friends? Because, is Scott Collins on?
Well, I think, I think Scott Graham's muted himself. Sorry. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I mean, that's, that's tough. I mean, we have a lot of, I mean, we have over twenty percent of our, our, our housing stock in town are second homes. You know, and, and with that comes the fact that people allow their relatives and friends to stay there. Are they charging them a fee? I don't know. It's gonna be hard to track because it's not on a, on a website somewhere, right? So, you know, minimally, maybe they're charging them a, you know, a house cleaning fee? Maybe if they, if they allow people to use them a lot. I mean, I have friends that do that. Um, they don't charge you to stay there, but they're like, hey, you gotta cover the house cleaning fee. We don't want to clean up after you. So there's probably a, a lot more, you know, likelihood of an occurrence of, of something like that. But I don't know how we'd get at that. I mean, you just allow people to stay there and you, you cannot have it be cleaned and not charge them any money, um, you know, if they're friends or family.
But I see that's where some of the complaints may be generated from.
Probably half of them are.
Yeah. Do we have any mechanism in the city to, to go after the, you know, the homeowner that, that is creating the kind of a nuisance or something? What's the...
The owner is the one responsible. Yeah, the owner is the one responsible for the nuisance, so if it actually does, if the disturbance actually rises to the level of nuisance per our ordinance, we have the ability to find them and those types of things. You have to issue them a warning first typically, but...
Right.
But there, there is nothing that prohibits in the current law that prohibits friends and families from using a friend's and family's home.
Yeah, and I'm not saying there should be, but...
Right, right, right.
It should be, if there are complaints are filed, it should be somewhere to track.
Just like any other property. Yeah, we, we do track them and we get a lot of those. Sometimes, again, they're, they rise to the level of violation of the municipal code and sometimes they don't.
Okay, because I have, even on my block here, I have informal rentals that I've, that I've seen. You know, I definitely, you know, I don't see them coming, I don't see them coming up as vacation rentals or, you know, on the websites because I've looked, but I know that there's, you know, during the summer months especially, there's multiple people staying there with different cars every weekend.
Right, so the impacts are the same.
Yeah, the impacts are the same.
Where there's been some mismatch when we released the numbers from host compliance, there's some disbelief about that. I think that's where we see the rub is that these informal things are occurring and they're outside the scope of host compliance because they're, they're, it's allowed use. It doesn't, they don't need a permit to do that. But the resident next door doesn't know that and they see the impact, they see the turnover and they feel like there's an illegal operation occurring. Now, a reasonable person would make that assumption. And so I think getting all the information online, which has been discussed a couple times tonight, will, will help address that issue and, and certainly following up, as you suggested, Chair Lur, that following up with folks when they make complaints will help address some of the other issues.
I think one of the things that will help too is, and I think it comes up later, is having consistent and visible signage for what is actually a permitted licensed vacation rental, probably curbside in each home. And then neighbors know that is actually a licensed vacation rental that is causing problems versus that is somebody's vacation home that doesn't have a license and then you do have to deal with it a little differently.
Yeah, and to build off that, Susan, as you recall in the committee meeting, I think Meredith was one of our committee members, discussed tonight that it'd be great if an STR would sort of canvass their neighbors to say, I'm, I'm, I'm an operator and here's my contact information, here's who I am, you know, here's what I'm about. And I don't know if you codify that or if that becomes part of an adopting regulation outside of the ordinance, but that was, that was a pretty good idea by Meredith.
Yeah, I think so too. Okay. So, anything on, moving down to page, page six, we're still in general, the general format, anybody have any comments or questions?
Some of the letters correspond, and I should say, I think we had 18 or 19 speakers and I think I've had close to 40 communications by email. But some correspondence, we're talking about this threshold of TOT because on one hand I can see it as, oh, you've got one next door, you don't want anybody there. Who cares if they're, if they're renting it or not? On the other hand, if it is a valid thing where people want these, is it fair to have somebody taking up a permit when they're not really charging out the space? So I don't have a position on that, it was just something that, that some of the correspondence from residents brought up and I just wondered if anybody else had any thoughts on that, or Susan, if you had any insight to that magic number there?
On the $500 minimum.
So the $500 would suggest somebody is collecting...
There was a, there was a calculation somewhere, I think.
$5,000. I, I think we, we did go sort of up and down in different numbers of, you know, some people thought, well, you should be contributing $1,000 of TOT a year. That seemed too high because some of these are lower-cost rentals, especially the, and then we, we talked about having different thresholds for homestay versus vacation rental, you know, full home rental, but decided rather than trying to split that off, we would just stick with one number. And I think, so, so if you were asking for more, you are really asking for a place to be inhabited every weekend, which some places are, but many aren't, and so that creates more impact on a neighborhood. So I think it was just a, a way of having a, a kind of an average number that suggested that if you're gonna give this permit to somebody when you have a waiting list of over, was 90, I guess it's over 100 now, people who would like to do this, it's not fair to have people sitting on a permit and underperforming. And the list we had of TOT collections, there were many who collected zero and that may have been an issue of the timing of when they were reviewed, so they hadn't come around to that cycle of, of paying their TOT. But some were, you know, $90, some were, so that suggested, you know, $900 of, that didn't really register. So it was kind of a way of holding their feet to the fire, if you really are gonna do this as a business, claim some real numbers here. I think that was the thought.
You know, kind of expanding on that, I mean, that kind of goes back to the, you know, I don't wanna harp on this, but the idea of sunsetting. So I mean, if someone's sitting on a permit, they're underperforming, they're, they're collecting $90 worth of TOT a year for, for six years, for example, and, you know, and we could, we could have a very high-performing vacation rental that brings not only people to the, you know, to our town, but, you know, spending dollars, but also, you know, revenue to the city. So I mean, another reason why, you know, we ought to consider it, so.
Yeah, look, by the same token, Jesse, that may bring, that may sunset somebody out who's doing a good quality business that's contributing quite a bit in TOT and bring in somebody that has, you know, is bringing in the bare minimum or less than the minimum.
For sure, for sure, I mean, I mean, I'm not saying this, I'm setting, you know, I, I, I'm not saying three years, you're out, five years, you're out. I mean, maybe, maybe it's a, it's a point system where, you know, if you're, if you're contributing X amount of, if you're renting X amount of days out of the month, I, I don't know, I'm just kinda, maybe it's a merit type of, of, of sunsetting type of system, I don't know. I'm just spitballing at this point.
Okay, we'll need to, at the end of all this, we're going to need to do a specific conversation about the sunsetting and where we, what values we use and what, what thresholds we'd like to see.
If I could ask?
Go ahead, Joseph.
You know, the, the predominant or the majority opinion of the citizen seems to be both to reduce the density and to reduce the cap. And I think eliminating the ones that have little or no use during the course of the, of the year is a really easier way to get to a cap that's something less than 250.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, yeah. I think once this goes into effect too, as far as the cap is, I think we're gonna see more and more turnover because, you know, percentage of people are not gonna wanna deal with, with the permitting fees, percentage of people are not gonna wanna deal with a minimum TOT. And so we're gonna see more of a turnover and I think that's gonna help on the sunsetting question too.
Well, and we already get a lot of turnover, about 20% of per year turnover.
Yeah.
So which would, in some regard, seem to negate the need to, to do that, but certainly that's up to the commission.
Okay. Okay, moving, let's see, we're into page six, that's 17.41, 1.040, so density limitations.
I, it sounds like from what the community is saying, we need to drop that number. The 250 is probably too high and also just looking at who we have active anyhow. I mean, if, if right now we have 216 advertising online, only 144 of those having permits, some of them, I guess, are getting permits, but if, and again, recognizing that some of the problems are with the illegal ones or vacation homes, we're already having problems in the community with just those 216 that are advertising online. Seems like we certainly don't wanna add to that. So I would consider dropping it down, I don't know, 150, 180, gets us a little closer to what people are talking about.
Yeah, one thing I'll offer here, if I can jump in is, is Exhibit B in the staff report is this December 2019 poll. And it's got hundreds of people responding, it's not the handful of people that spoke tonight. And when, it's curious to me that if you look at the relationship between cap and distance, that, which describes you, I live in a neighborhood with few STRs and it's, it's almost 60%. I live in a neighborhood with too many STRs, it's 30%. So a third of the people think it's a problem now. And then when you look at the distance though, it's, you look at the cap, it's the number of guests, let me see where I have it here. No cap, 15%, keep the cap at 250, 46%, lower the cap, 39%. So the cap at 250 is, or less, is acceptable to 80-some percent. But if you look at the buffer, 250 feet is suggested by the planning commission, 32%, a buffer of more than 250 feet, 41%. So 73% think the 250-foot buffer or more. That's a significant difference than the number of people on a cap. So if you consider the distance as the sensitive issue, then the cap's almost meaningless. I don't wanna say no cap if we have a good distance factor, but I also wanna say the cap isn't as important as the distance. I understand you to say if we were to make the buffer a certain distance and all of these permits that are non-conforming, expiring in three years, by attrition, they'll take care of themselves in three years. Am I understanding you correctly? Well, I'm just saying that I would apply the distance test strictly and let the cap almost float because I think it's the, the capacity of the, of the city to absorb new forms of thinking about some of these things is, is, is always very interesting to me. And, but it's the idea of distance. And I, I see those people in that neighborhood and I appreciate the, the, the graphics that were done by the city, but it just points to me what the problem is, is the smaller of the lots and the, the distance factor is that much more critical. If I have friends come over when I'm renting the, the unit and I've got three sets of friends and that's three cars that aren't fitting on the, on the parking, they're going into the street. And if, if two doors down, somebody has three friends coming over because that's a rental, all of a sudden the entire street's taken up by two properties. If, if you use the three-watt kind of thing on the small lots. You know, and our, our friend, our, our colleague that called in from Northmore Bay, you know, where they have the smaller lots as well. If we wanna look at the idea of higher-density housing to get it affordable and to get our, 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 our people housed more effectively, we've got to be very cautious about not using something like a lot distance, but an actual distance. I think it's, I think it's much more interesting to, to control this by, we don't care where you are as long as you're not too close to somebody else. And I, I think given a certain period of time, it would self-correct. But that's just my relationship, as long as we're talking about the cap, I just wanted to say to me, the cap is less important than the distance and they're related to each other. And I think that survey and the nature of, of who is complaining, the complaints are coming from people who live near these. Nobody's, not one citizen who's not an owner of one of these has, has, has spoken to defend them. They're all talking about, eh, just not near me. Keep them away from me, keep them out of my neighborhood. So we don't care how much the cap is, just not next to me. Or near me, or near the one that is next to me. So let me, if I may, after three years, if you have two that are side by side, one would have to go away. Or, you know, maybe several would have to go away. How, and then, then we implement a lottery system, so the devil's gonna be in the details here. How is that gonna play out, Scott? How, how do you envision that playing out?
So with the way we currently have it, you know, drafted, and I, and I would say this, if, I, I think Scott in the presentation, he showed you the numbers. With the current distance measurement profile, you're probably gonna reduce down the number of vacation rentals by somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 with the current methodology. If you went to 250-foot buffers, you're probably gonna have about 150 in town, maybe between 150 and 170. So that gives you some idea about what those things do. And then to answer your question, Mr. Barone, how we would do it is, you know, over, over the time that's allowed in the ordinance to allow for some of that attrition to take place, because it's gonna be messy to do the lottery piece, we'll have some of those, well, a lot more of those come into compliance because you'll read McCall that I said there's 20% turnover every year. So we're hoping that fixes a lot of the problems and then when we go through the process, we'll identify ones that are next to each other and in conflict and basically that's kind of the, the cage match in the lottery between those folks individually versus everybody, it's all mixed in, it'll be, the ones that are in conflict will go into the lottery system in their area and then see who comes out at the end.
So it'll be case by case?
Yeah, and I, it's gonna have to probably be. And, and I would add that, you, you know, the beach, beach track has been discussed already and a couple members of the public who live in that area have either submitted comments or, or talked tonight. And, and they have a real, real concern, I mean, that's where the issue is primarily. There, there's other, you know, spots in town, but this is the main area. Scott's point about attrition is correct, however, we don't see a lot of attrition in the beach track area for a reason because the market has dictated that's where people want to be. They want a vacation as close as possible to the ocean, to the beach. That's why we have a proliferation of them there. So just to, to give some context to that, Beach Comer alone, just one street, accounts for almost, I wouldn't say 20% of the total TOT generated by vacation rentals. 20%. It's 10 homes or 15 homes make all that money. So these aren't going to be ones that are gonna attrition out. Those are in it for the long haul because they are major producers of revenue for that, that homeowner and, and by, by default, that's revenue to the city to pay for services. So I just wanna make that understood, I mean, you talk about that process, Jesse, that, that's, that's where this is really gonna, the rubber's really gonna hit the road. Regardless of what buffer you choose, that's where the most conflicts will be. And we imagine, I imagine most of those conflicts will still be present three years from now.
So Scott, we have, basically we have primary, secondary and tertiary markets for these vacation rentals. The primary markets are gonna be closest to the beach, better views, better access. So it almost, it almost, what is our primary function here as in this ordinance, are we trying to create revenue for the city or are we trying to protect neighborhoods? Or are we doing a mixture of both across the different commercially active zones or?
Right. That was, that was the, you, you, you know, and, and Michael hit it on the head, you know, that was, it was fascinating to see those results from the, the survey, I hand, I hand-entered 400 of those over the Christmas break or holiday break. So I, I learned a lot because a lot of people also submitted comments which were very enlightening. But the committee, remember, was charged with trying to formulate a compromise or a consensus as much as possible or a balance. And so that's why you have something that doesn't necessarily match folks who maybe aren't as tuned to, okay, well, 250-foot buffer sounds great, but when you're faced with the reality as a decision-maker or recommender about what that would do to the supply of existing vacation rentals, that's a factor you have to take into account. And just to, to remind everybody, like the, the city staff and the council member and the mayor who are involved in the discussion, we weren't voting on these things, we just, you know, helped facilitate the process and provide information. So this committee sort of had to grapple with, the same thing you're grappling with now is how to create that balance. And like I said, I, I feel for folks like Pat Vaughn who live around several of these and he's right, there, the proposal doesn't eliminate... And he's right, the proposal doesn't eliminate all of the, all of the STRs. There still would be a healthy amount with the recommended approach. And if you went to the stricter 250-foot buffer, you eliminate most of them. So that's, that's sort of the ends of the spectrum. And again, yes, great question, Chair Lurie, this is a balancing act.
Scott Collins, did I see in the report, and I'm trying to look for it here because I didn't write it down, but I know it's somewhere, you said something like 17% of 24%. So 24% of the TOT comes from these and 17% comes from the?
I think that's fact. 17% of the total TOT generated in the city, that includes RV camps, hotels, motels, and vacation rentals. Vacation rentals account for 17% of that total amount.
Okay, so when you say we're going to lose this number on Beach Comer, we're talking 17% of 24% is?
About 100, it's about 100,000 a year.
Yeah. So we're going to, we're going to sacrifice a neighborhood for $100,000?
I'm not saying you should sacrifice any. I'm just, I'm just providing that information. This is, this is your opportunity to make, I just wanted to provide that context and remember and remind everybody, that's what this committee had to do is try to balance all these things.
I just want to make sure people understand the number.
Yeah. I was going to go back to the whereas, I went back to the whereas's and I was looking at, you know, in the beginning of this, whereas this, whereas that. I didn't see anything about whereas the general fund was affected. So I mean, I'm sensitive to this issue. I just want to make sure the whereas, I didn't miss a whereas in there.
Okay, so part of the problem with the density issue, either through cap or through buffer zones or through adjacencies of how many lots from one to the other, is we have such a variety of size, shape, and square footage of lots in town. We have 10,000-plus square foot lots, you know, over in, you know, the Moro Track and we have 2,000, 2,400 square foot lots over in the island streets. So, you know, maybe with these adjacencies, by having a minimum linear distance, we can pick up the problem with the small lots, whether that figure is 150 feet measured linearly across the street, along the street, or 200 feet, that maybe should be determined and still keep it as a number of lots because then the number of lots picks up the variety of lot sizes and footage sizes. And a minimum linear distance would pick up a base minimum for the small lots so that we're not having three on a block. Where is some of those island streets where you could have, if you're three apart, you could have three or four of them on a block spaced out across the street from each other?
I think the other thing too to remember is we're blessed with this terrain here, which makes really bizarre microclimates for sound.
Right.
You know, I can, I can have somebody three or four lots away and not understand anything they're doing latterly, but if I go three streets above me, I can hear everything that's said on their deck. You know, so distance is tempered by relationship in the terrain. And Commissioner Lurie, I both know, we live up above Spencer, we hear the football stadium as if it's on the radio in the house. It's, it's, sound travels in very bizarre ways. This idea of lot relationships is one of these abstract things that I think the distance test also further guarantees proximity is not going to be violated by some local condition. Where, you know, the large B and B next to me is, I've had very few issues with them. But the people in the lower terrain below them where their deck is, you know, 40 feet away from somebody's bedrooms is, was initially a problem, but they corrected by screening. But I think the idea, though, is the distance means everything, especially on the small lots. That I really do worry about the North Moro Bay and some of these new areas where we can expect higher density home situations to be impacted by something where three lots is 120 feet. That just doesn't seem to be enough to me.
Okay, so does anybody else have any other solutions that they could think of on this density issue?
Well, I would agree that we should have the alternative density measurement, an alternative to three lots and whether you call it 150 feet or 200 feet or even 250 feet linear, not a radius. I think that's essential. And returning to the notion of density in the beachfront, you know, I think this committee has got to decide whether we want to do something that's conservative and incremental or radical. Radical being, do we want to impose some kind of a density constraint that will eliminate 60% of the ones in the beach area? And, you know, and in view of the law of unintended consequences, I don't think we should go quite that radically the first time out. If nothing else, just evaluate whatever ordinance we do decide on a year from now or rather, no, we would have to, we would have to evaluate it at the three-year level and decide whether it needs additional tinkering or not, whether the densities we've settled on are adequate or whether we can or should increase them.
I think it's important to remember here too that, you know, we're going to be one of three bodies that the city council is going to take a look at and, you know, our recommendation should be fairly technical, I think. You know, TBID is going to look at it a slightly different way. The committee, you know, the committee that Susan was on looked at it a slightly different way. And, you know, the city council is going to make the ultimate decision. And, you know, we should be giving them, I think, more of a technical recommendation, in my opinion.
I would still like to get back to the number figure. And I understand what Michael was saying about, if you put a 250-foot buffer, you're going to eliminate them anyhow. But I think in terms of what the community wants to hear, I think they want to hear us reduce that number from 250 total permits. So I just, I feel like that's a relatively easy one to do, given that we don't have that many active permits anyhow. And it shows an effort on behalf of this body to really hear what people are talking about. And then we can also address the spatial limitations. So I don't know. I feel like I'd like to see that number changed. That's what we heard more than anything in the public comment.
I agree. And I think that what Michael's saying is that it would end up being moot, so reducing it wouldn't be, wouldn't be that big of a deal anyway, so why not reduce it?
And I agree as well. I agree. Again, starting with 216 and realizing that 40 to 50 aren't very useful and the attrition rate of 20 a year, I think we could easily settle on 150 as the capacity.
I want it to be difficult. I want to say 175.
I was going for 180, so I think we're good. You know, we're in there.
I don't think, you know, I land on not having the reduction of the number, but dealing more with the spatial, the spatial configuration. Because I think we're going to get, we're going to get attrition and I think we're going to get, you know, the opportunity to review that number in a year. You know, whether that's, you know, with the COVID-19, a year may be the wrong time to review it. It may be better to go two years so we have a viable, maybe get back to the new normal rather than a review in a year where we, we don't know what's happened and we still don't know what's going to be happening to the next year or so.
But I have to agree with Susan that that's overwhelmingly, you know, the response I heard in the emails and in the comments was the number's too high. So I mean, I mean, if we're here to serve, which I'm here to serve, you know, we have to be listening, so.
Yeah, and if we chose not to reduce the capacity, you know, some people in the areas where the short-term vacation rentals are not very common would consider that as a decision to bring those kinds of rentals to the neighborhood, their neighborhood, where they're not quite as plentiful right now. And I'm sure that would not make those people very happy.
I'm not against lowering the cap. I just think it's, it doesn't have the efficacy for the problem that some of our most impacted residents were talking about.
Agreed.
I think.
I think you're going to do both.
I agree.
You're going to do both.
So let's, let's pick a number then, you know, we're picking numbers out of the sky blue air here.
One of the things, again, I would just comment on that we didn't see any comparison with other locations as to the density. And some of the anecdotal things that came through the email correspondence, one I recall was Santa Cruz, a city of 65,000, having fewer than 200, if I'm not mistaken. You know, so I don't know what our lateral communities that also depend on tourism are looking at in terms of this density. But, you know, I'm certainly not opposed to our group saying 150.
I have a notebook full of other communities. You know, I don't have that, I mean, it's right, it's here. And I, I could probably email to you, I could go through and pull some of those out. But we have a lot, relative to the size of our community, we actually have a pretty high percentage of vacation rentals. Now, again, not all of them are active. Very high percentage of vacation homes, so.
Okay, Susan, one of the questions I have is our relationship to the linear, you know, measurement of our coastline and the number of ocean view homes that we have in relation to our capital. Some of these cities like, you know, we're pretty much literally stretched out along the coastline with visual access to, to the ocean from almost anywhere in town.
Right.
Ocean are big. That bodes for a higher level of vacation rentals because those are what people want to, where they want to stay. Whereas if you have a city like, let's just say, let's say like Santa Cruz, you have a smaller, you've got a larger population, you have a smaller per capita rate of vacation rentals per resident, but you may not have, you may have the same number of vacation rentals per linear foot of coastline or view area. I don't know.
I outlaw vacation rental homes entirely. They just allow homestays.
Okay, yeah, so.
It's sort of, again, an apples and oranges thing.
So maybe Moss Landing or, you know, or some of these other areas might be a better, a better, a better basis for us to choose a number. So I'm not sure where we're pulling numbers from. We could say 100, we could say 42 or we could say 375. I don't see a basis of where we're pulling the scientific measurement of what's, what's the best number for a town with our geographical configuration would be. I don't have that number in my head.
If I'm basing it on something I'll loosely call demand, I mean, if there's roughly 182 now and 40 or 50 of those are virtually unused and there's 20 and it's going to be an attrition rate of 20, I mean, that's, that's how I get to the number 150. It's some sort of semblance of demand.
But those are, those are licensed. Those are not the unlicensed ones.
Right. I'm only dealing, I'm only dealing with the ones that are licensed or have made an application, certainly not the.
If we're looking at demand, we, you know, demand is also for the unlicensed because we haven't had, we haven't had an enforcement regimen that would force them to come into compliance. Now we do. So if we have, say, another 100, 150 out there, I don't know what the number is, let's say we have another 100 out there that are illegally operating or operated on a secondary basis market, our demand is up there, you know, is up there higher.
Well, when I say demand, I don't think, I don't think the majority of the population here has any appetite to, in a sense, you know, test with the overall market. When I say demand, I mean, what's the group that's, that will be actively involved in renting their houses next year, aside from the waiting list? I mean, the people who will, how many people will be soily pained if they don't get their permit for next year? And that number, I think, is about 150. And that's, that's what I'd make the basis right now for deciding.
Is there a hard number in Cayucus, Cambria, or is it just buffer?
I believe it's just a buffer. Yeah, I think that's true. Most, most of the county now, the incorporated cities, Pismo may have a cap where they only allow home shares in residential, but most of their vacation rentals are in commercial because they're downtown, is on the beach. I believe that Grover Beach instituted a cap. There's one cap for coastal and one cap for non-coastal areas, is that right, Scott? I think it's like 70, 30, and I forget which one is which. Yeah.
I think Joe's right. I think that if you account for COVID, I would say the typical year you see about 175, 180, maybe 200 performing, which I say more than just, you know, submitting minimal TOT annually. That also includes the commercial ones that are permitted, which is about 13.
I think it's really, I think it's really important not to isolate these, these issues because when we're talking, we haven't gotten to it yet, but if we talk about homestay being, you know, unlimited, if that's what we want to do, and we're talking about the commercial and mixed residential being unlimited, then we may be putting a cap on that seems low compared to now. But the opportunities in these other areas, my biggest concern is that when someone comes into a residential area, as our, as our citizens on Beach Comer have repeatedly said, they intended that to be a residence and they find that they don't have a neighborhood. And one would assume that zoning that says single-family residence isn't going to be occupied by a bunch of businesses with turnovers that have multifamily numbers associated with it.
Sure, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's a reasonable expectation to assume planning would guard the capacity of the neighborhood to maintain its residential qualities and character rather than be violated by a mechanism, which I admit is, is one I've used myself, but I, the idea of homestay, completely different. There's almost no argument by any of the entities that have commented about homestays. There's almost no comment except a few people who commented about the mixed use areas. When you go into a mixed-use area, you're going into a mixed-use area. Oh, they've got a car dealer next to me. Oh, the cannabis shops next to me. Oh, you're, you're a commercial area. I'm in a residential area. I didn't expect there to be 16 people next to me every week. It wasn't a reasonable assumption to make. So I think we have to be very cautious about the fact that, I understand we're a tourist area and I understand we have tourist income, but we also have stores hurting from lack of residences here. And we just got over a housing issue about where are we going to put the people? We'll put the people in the empty houses. We put residents in the empty houses, you know? And I think we've got plenty of opportunity for people who are entrepreneurs with wonderful properties capable of being transformed into vacation rentals to look at some of these other options that are going to be available in the future. So I'm not concerned at all about dropping the cap or the distance things because I think there are other things we are offering to creative people to take advantage of similar opportunities.
Okay, so what number do we want to put out as the EC recommendation number?
150.
Okay. Michael says 150. Susan, what do you say?
I can go with that.
Jesse?
I like 175, but I could live with 162.
150 for me.
150? Okay, I would say voting, I would say maintain the cap through the review period at 250 and then adjust it after the review period, but we actually have some hard data to work with. But I'm obviously outvoted, so if we average those up, we're basically around 170, you know, we're around 150. That's basically mostly 150 if we do a, however you want to statistically analyze it, mostly it's 150. So I guess we'll go with the recommendation of a cap number of 150. Is everybody happy with that then, except for me?
And to be, to be clear, this applies to home shares as well.
Yes.
They are part of them. They are part of the one fifty, I just want to make sure.
Holy wow, no, I don't agree with that at all.
I don't either.
If that's, I mean, if we were going to throw out the entire committee's recommendation, that was part of their recommendation, that they didn't come up with a separate cap for home shares. So that was, that is part of that right now.
I would say one fifty with home shares excluded.
Exactly.
Unlimited.
So unlimited on home share, see, I'd.
That's the way I feel about it.
The problem is, I don't think we have a clear idea of how many of the permits we have are home shares and how many are home rentals. So that information, we never got separated out. So all the permits that are existing, there are about a hundred and eighty, maybe a hundred and seventy that are active as far as.
And some of those could be home shares and some of those could be.
Those are home shares for sure because some of the people on the committee were home share owners. Yeah.
See, I don't think we have a handle on what the numbers are throughout. That's why I don't, you know, that's why I'm advocating keeping the cap where it is till we actually get some results and then revisiting it at the review period. But then again.
But then effectively, we're doing nothing because, I mean, if we leave, if we if we leave it at three years and we don't drop the cap, then we end up with no action for three years.
Well, we have a review period, this this ordinance is going to review it in one year or a specified timeframe that we suggest, or we we could suggest.
Right, and council is considering an urgency ordinance in the next meeting to freeze all new permits.
I saw no testimony that objected to home shares, none.
Yeah.
I agree, I think they're they're not problematic, I mean, you're, if somebody comes to my house and they're going to act a fool, they're going to be left, you know, showing the door, so.
Right, well, the the community survey actually disagrees, I mean, not that we have to rely on that, but the community survey didn't really see differentiation between the two, they felt the impacts were similar. So, I mean, I guess it all depends on where where you want to come at it from. But the committee, the committee did talk a lot about the differences, but ultimately didn't come up with a separate cap or unlimited number of home shares because I think probably for the same reason that you, the five of you have identified, you don't have enough intel to sort of make a good a good logical argument. I mean, I think we all understand the the philosophy of having a homeowner at their place while somebody's renting that you're going to have less of the behavioral issues. I think we all agree on that.
I think if we're spanning this across multiple meetings, that's going to be great, but the residents that communicate with me specifically, we're talking about non-hosted rentals. That's the problem, not the hosted one.
Oh, sure, yeah, different, different impact.
I don't have one letter or heard anything tonight about hosted rentals.
I don't know if we have that many hosted rentals. There's definitely a few of them out there. If you think of the kinds of properties that could accommodate that, letting a person into your house through your main door, I mean, I suppose if you have an A D U, but again, ADUs aren't going to be allowed after a certain point. So some of them do have a separate entrance, but, you know, just think of the housing stock in Morro Bay, how many of them are there that are going to really accommodate a homestay? And given that those are included in this number already with the permits, so two hundred and fifty, two hundred and forty eight, something like that issued, ninety unperforming or low performing. I don't know. You know, maybe up to a hundred and eighty.
We also have another ninety on the waiting list wanting to get onto the.
And those are likely vacation homes, I don't, well, I don't know what they are.
And we don't know, because we don't ask, we didn't ask for that because that's not part of the existing ordinance, we have, really don't, I don't know how we would get at that, Scott, do you?
Um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's tough, I mean, I don't. It's it's not something that's part of the application process that we currently have, I mean, with the new ordinance, it's defined in there, the current order doesn't define them, which is why they're not accounted for.
Right, it's the rub.
Yeah.
Well, if we do, if we do freeze them and we have a problem, we could always address this next year, right? Say, say we did say unlimited homestays, but turns out that's, you know, it would have been a huge mistake, we could, we could just revisit.
Yes, and and you've got to go to your your favorite commission, the coastal commission, anytime you want to make a change, and that's a very time consuming and challenging process, so that that, I mean, I like the idea of the incrementalism and that approach. And if we didn't have the coastal setting, we would, that would be great, we don't control.
Also, Scott, you also have people that have invested in their property to set this up as as such, and then you're going to tell them that, no, you can't do it anymore.
Yeah, I don't feel like you give them with one hand and take it away with the others.
Yeah, yeah. It's kind of why the reason I think the two fifty cap, all inclusive, stays the same, and then we revisit that after we have some actual data that we can work with, but.
Could we add into the application process, is your rental a homestay or a freestanding home rental? And then we would start to know?
Yes.
That's exactly what we would do.
Yeah, with the new ordinance, absolutely.
I mean, we would want to be tracking like how all of this works because we would need to for the ordinance purposes to see what we have functioning, but right now we just don't know because it's not part of our ordinance, there's such, there's such a thing as a home share in the current ordinance, it doesn't exist.
What if we said no more than a hundred and fifty home rentals? And we don't put a cap on the home shares?
I like that.
Well, I said that ten minutes ago, that's all right.
No, no, I was going to say, I think, I think Michael said that just a little bit ago.
You gotta do the circle, you know?
Can we do that? I mean, I mean, obviously, we're not going to make the final decision, can we recommend that to the city council?
Absolutely, as long as three of you agree, then yes.
I think. I agree.
Okay, so we have, I can't, I can't see Joseph, but I imagine he's.
I was just thinking, you know, I hate to contemplate this decision without knowing an idea of how many properties we're talking about, I can't imagine that there are very many properties that are successful at renting out a bedroom in their house to a stranger, and on the other hand, you know, human nature being what it is, it seemed like it would be a pretty handy tool for evasion, as in rent, here, rent my bedroom and by the way, I'm slipping out for the next two days and, you know, and suddenly we have the the same problem that we had before.
And they also, they also have the bare minimum of five hundred, five hundred dollars a year in the T O T, so they have to do it quite a bit.
Well, some people have really bad roommates, I mean, I had one in college, so, I mean, these things happen.
I was thinking about it a little bit, I probably can get at the number of home shares. Well, home shares, yeah, I probably could get at those because we know if we went through the entire list, it's going to take a little while, but we go through the entire list, the home share will be, will have the same address for the permit and billing address for the permit as the address they live in, so we would be able to go through and look at those, and those would be those numbers. Or they'd be, that would be a lot that has unnecessary dwelling on it, it would be one of those two things.
That needs to go away.
Yeah, I'd rather not make an exception for it at this point and just wait to see what, how egregious that omission is and just see what a reaction in numbers. It strikes me as something that could be pretty readily modified if we really thought we had made the wrong decision.
I mean, we obviously don't have very many of them right now because they're, the ones that we have, they're licensed or part of the two fifty that are licensed.
So, I mean, I think we heard a hundred and fifty home rentals, unlimited home shares, and that, we got three to people to agree, so. Are we, are we good there, or?
That's my take from what you all just said.
My vote, let's move on.
And what about commercial, does this surf on?
You know what I wondered about with commercial, was thinking about the downtown, and one of the property orders came to me and said, well, you know, I have this building right in the middle of downtown and it has two apartments upstairs that are currently rented out to people, you know, family, couples that are living there. He said, could they be vacation rentals? And I said, according to this ordinance, yes, they could, and it's unlimited. So we had talked about using some of those mixed use upstairs, maybe behind the the building places to add to our housing stock for people. So, I mean, there was a part of me looking at how many empty storefronts we have, thinking about maybe we should just let them be rentals until we kind of get through this crisis in terms of being like residential rentals, which I know won't fly with anybody, but is that where we want to go with the mixed use residences turning into vacation rentals?
I I wouldn't have a problem with an existing unit, existing residential unit turn, going from full time rental to vacation rental. I just wouldn't want to see an influx of new dwelling units inhabiting our commercial.
Oh, but like guys, I mean, I mean.
Well, they wouldn't be allowed either.
Yeah.
Under current zoning.
We've talked periodically about increasing the height limitations in in the downtown area and in building housing, and we've said, and that housing should be affordable housing. And now here we're talking about a well intentioned policy that's going to do absolutely the opposite, it's going to take what is probably affordable apartment housing and eliminating it in terms of short term vacation rentals, I don't. There's another, there's a perfect example of another unintended consequence.
There's, well, no, because any project that comes in that does that has to go through a discretionary review process, which means it's going to be permitted is exactly what it is. Any change to that would have to come back to a planning commission.
No, no, I, you misunderstand what I'm saying, Scott, I don't mean, I don't mean the the actual construction of apartments on a third floor. What I mean is, that's, you know, part of what we're trying to achieve, and here's the example of us taking affordable apartments and eliminating them and turning them into turning them into short term vacation rentals and unavailable for lower income people.
But we're not changing the ordinance, the ordinance currently allows for unlimited vacation rentals in the in the commercial, we're just not choosing to change that to limit them.
The residents, most of our commercial areas are nonconforming.
I have to admit, I never even thought of that issue, when I, when I looked at the the commercial multi, multi use, I thought, fine, there are hotels and motels there, it's not a big difference, as Susan was saying, but I didn't imagine that we were going to be scrapping apartments if we made that, if we if we didn't change that.
It's a matter of providing opportunities for people to to envision things a little differently, I don't know how many people that I see in some of the places that I know are rented as vacation rentals being attracted to being downtown. But I could see a number of younger people thinking that was a viable place, but I think it all depends on the way things pencil out. I think for the for the homes, apparently people can make a lot of money by renting this, these homes out as vacation rentals, I think it flips when you get into the downtown, I think it makes more sense to do apartments that are rented all the time downtown, I mean, that's just my my intuition. And I think some of the commentators said that they, we shouldn't worry about somebody losing a permit for vacation rental because they can still rent the house out as a as a full time rental. And so, you know, what's the marginal difference between that? Well, I'm sure there is a number, which is why the people are doing vacation rentals rather than full time rentals, but I don't know where it is, but I don't think it's a giant one, but it must be something, but I think downtown, it probably flips.
We do have some pretty popular vacation rentals in the downtown. Greaties by those places that get, I mean, I hear the people staying in them, so they're pretty full.
Yeah, we also have the commercial strip along north, north Main Street that we've been trying to push towards residential, multifamily residential. And then now this allows those apartments, instead of being rented long term, to be rented as as vacation rentals.
But it also allows there to be another pro forma that something gets built instead of nothing, which I think is an alternative as well.
So, so do we want to instigate a cap? Or do we want to instigate a number for the commercial district, or do we want to leave that? That open?
My vote is no.
No what, Jesse?
Leave it alone, no cap.
I think there's only thirteen right now, so it doesn't sound like it's a mess, although that sounds a little weird to me too, when I think about how many I know of, there's more than thirteen, but whatever.
Okay. So, so leave the commercial areas the way they are, no cap? Okay.
I don't know when they voted, I don't know, nobody else anything.
I'm fine for, I'm fine.
Everybody jumping up to say no.
All right, I'll go along with not placing the limitations for the for the commercial areas right now. I just, you know, I just fear that, you know, if it does become a problem later on, you know, we will be fighting an uphill battle, that's all.
Yeah, I think my take is that, you know, people are, people are upset about something, we need to fix that, you know, no one's really upset about this, so it's not, it's not broke.
Good point, all right, I buy that.
Okay, so just in summary, to make sure that I've got this correct in my own mind, so we're having a hard cap at a hundred and fifty for both hosted and non-hosted vacation and short term rentals.
I thought it was hard cap, one fifty for regular vacation rentals, no cap. For hosted, for hosted. Didn't have a number on hosted, that's what I thought.
And I thought Scott was going to get back to us on the numbers that we did have.
I'm saying I can do that, if you, you know, we can, we can do that, we can go through that exercise.
Right, but this is, I mean, forgive me for saying this, but this is a little urgent, we need to really get something to the city council so that they can, I mean, right, Scott? We really should try to get something to them.
I would say, as it stands right now, you're not getting through this ordinance tonight, so we can bring something back at the next meeting, you know, and we can, I can make that happen in that timeframe, so we can bring that back. Yes.
And we have it slated to go to council in September, Jesse, so that I think we'll be okay, like late September, yeah.
Okay, okay, so let's go ahead and wrap this up for tonight then, one of the things that we should do is does anybody have any questions that the staff should try to acquire data on prior to the next, the next meeting?
I really would like.
And non-hosted, we're also looking at the number of commercial, you know, we have the number of commercial, okay, and there's thirteen, and it's thirteen, correct.
So, maybe I should just drop this issue, but I'm going to bring it up one last time and then I won't talk about it again, I promise, but the sun setting thing, so are we thinking that, you know, through attrition with, you know, with placing the the buffers and the caps, that the sun setting should not be an issue? Is that what I, that my commission folks believe?
So I think, I think part of the the issue, and I think Scott raised it last time, was and was a very good point, is the Beachcomber track, that attrition thing as we move down the road a little ways, isn't really going to have as much of an effect because those are the ones that are generating most of the revenue. But then our distance requirements will be what takes those and fixes the issue. If you're okay with that, then great, I was just, that was the point, is that we already have attrition happening because we have turnover. In the total numbers, just in that area where we have, we'll call it the over concentration, you know, that'll have to be taken care of through, you know, through the the distance requirements.
All right, because I anticipate in the next two weeks, we're going to have a glutton, a litany, I should say glutton, a litany of of emails about this, you know, topic and this one.
Okay, so the other point that we need to look at is is buffers, whether we're using, was we're using the the multiple lot with adjacency with a minimum distance or whether we're going to go with a with a bubble, bubble buffers.
It occurred to me that, you know, the code, the building codes, which I deal with all day, all day long, always talks about, well, not always, a lot of times talk about this or that, whichever is greater, whichever is lesser, or, you know, maybe we could institute a three lots or a hundred and fifty feet, whichever is greater or whichever is, whichever is less, I mean, it doesn't have to be so cut and dry, we can give ourselves a little flexibility there.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking too. But what is that number? Do we want to get some more data on what that number should be?
I like Scott's, Scott Collins, when he was talking about a hundred and fifty feet radially from, you know, the front face of the lot and then fifty feet to the back. That seemed very reasonable to me when he did, when he did the overlay with the, with the buffer on the map, but...
Okay, other input?
Two fifty.
I like the, the, the two hundred linear feet as a, as an alternative to, to the three lots. That strikes me as simple. It's like using both of them. I mean, the greater of those two.
Okay, Susan?
That seems good, what Joe said.
So the, the two hundred linear feet in most neighborhoods in the town will be a lot more than three lots.
Well, when you say a lot, it would, it would be a lot.
Well, it'll be at least one or two other lots, depending on what, in, in a, it is standard neighborhoods, it'll be probably an extra two lots. And in North Morro Bay, on the east side of the highway, I don't know, three, maybe four? Probably like, it's more like six or seven, I think.
Could we say two hundred feet or three lots, whichever is less?
Six or seven lots.
That doesn't sound any good.
Michael's hard no.
You know, I, I admit I don't know the impact, so maybe, maybe, maybe a hundred and seventy-five feet is appropriate. You know, the answer depends on exactly what the impact will be, how many, how many of the existing rentals will be excluded and, you know.
So if you do a hundred and fifty, like in the areas where, where the concern was noted, which was like North Morro Bay where the small lots are, right? You know, if you do a hundred and fifty, it's going to push it out more than three lots. It'll push out four, maybe more. That's a, a good amount in those neighborhoods, then that's good. If you do a hundred and seventy plus there, then you're going to push them out more lots and maybe that's fine. You know, in, in the other neighborhoods, say in the, you know, south part of the town where we have bigger lots, then it'll simply, that, that number will come into play and it'll be the, it'll be the three lots, not the hundred and seventy-five linear feet.
I want to, I want to asterisk my comments with these are home rentals, not hosted rentals. I don't really care hosted rental.
Okay. I would like to say, you know, around a hundred and fifty, it seemed, that seems reasonable. That gives you, that essentially gives you a three hundred feet between, between vacation rentals, even in the small lots as a minimum, and then the three lots in the larger lot, lot areas, so.
It's a radius, it's a radius. It doesn't double.
So what do you want us to, yeah, so if we're doing, if we're looking at the linear issue and doing the, it's three lots or the minimum linear distance, you, you said leading into this section that you wanted us to bring back more data on this. What, what are you, what are you looking for us to do? Take in, for the neighborhoods and do what that would look like? Based on one fifty, one seventy-five, two hundred? I mean, what are, what are we, what are we supposed to bring back to you?
I can, I can bring up the map again if people want to see that. I mean, right now.
Yeah, let's go ahead and bring the map up.
I know, I know we thought we were winding down, but...
We spent a lot of time with those maps and...
Let's rev it up again. All right, so this, I, I zoomed out a little bit to give us more of a, an overview of the, the community. Let's see. So you all are acquainted with this area. Here's Delmar Park. So the, the two fifty on this side of town near Delmar, you can see this two hundred and fifty foot buffer basically takes out the entire block. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven lots on that part of town. Over here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, maybe eight. And that's the two hundred and fifty foot buffer. When you drop that down to two hundred, you probably gain or lose one, one home, maybe two on a buffer. And then the hundred foot, it's mostly, it's usually about two, maybe three at the maximum linear, one side to the other that would be affected. So we could do a hundred and fifty or a hundred and seventy-five and add that into the mix so that you guys can visualize. Would that be helpful? Or is this enough for you to kind of chew on?
It would be helpful if the staff report had two fifty, two hundred, one seventy-five and one hundred next time.
One hundred, we have one hundred right now. This is what I'm showing. Do you want one fifty and one seventy-five?
I think it's important that they be in the staff report so that we can see this instead of just in, in...
Yeah, that, that, that's, I just want to make sure I, I know that's what you need. One fifty, one seventy-five. Okay.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Scott.
Yeah.
Okay, at this point, we'll, we'll close this item unless anybody else has something that they want to add or to see more data on for the next meeting. Okay, so we'll close hearing number, hearing item number B, B one. And we'll move on to...
Maybe we need a actual recommendation for continuance to the next meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're right.
A motion and a second and I'll call off.
A move, we continue the discussion of the vacation rental ordinance to the next meeting.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none. Scott, you want to call the, the vote?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Graffia?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Chair Lee Lord?
Uh, yes.
Motion fast, five zero. We'll be seeing you next Tuesday with the vacation rental orders and requested additional information.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Elena.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, item number C is new business. We, we have none listed. Item number D is unfinished business and there is none listed. So item number E is planning commissioner comments and future agenda items. Does anybody wish to speak up on this?
No, but just one question. So we have five Tuesdays in September. We do one in three, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, there's seen, nobody's jumped in there, so Scott, do you have any comments? No, I'm good. Okay. At this point, we'll adjourn to the next regularly planned planning commission meeting on September first, two thousand twenty at six P M via the teleconference here. And hopefully our technology holds up. So, okay, thanks, everybody, and have a good evening.
Bye.
Good night.